Good evening. We'll call to order the January 21st meeting of the Sayerville Board of Education. Please rise with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Unfortunately, we had some sad news last week. One of our former teachers, Linda Carney, who was a physical education and health teacher, she was also a peer leadership mentor, passed away suddenly. She is survived by her husband of 43 years, Reggie. And we also lost a former student, Brian Vogel, who is the brother of Dave Vogel, one of our middle school teachers, also passed suddenly. So please remember them in your thoughts and prayers and their family. Thank you. Ms. Hill, will you summarize executive session, please?
The board discussed personnel, including but not limited to agenda items, student matters, negotiations related to the Teamsters, and matters falling under attorney-client privileges. Do you want me to do roll call?
Please do.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Mrs. Chudkowski?
Here.
Mr. Fernandez?
Here.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Here.
Mrs. Maldonado?
Here.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Here.
Mrs. Pabon?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Bloom?
Here.
Okay. Any correspondence that we need to know about, Ms. Hill?
No.
All righty. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the previous board meetings.
So moved.
Second.
It was Mr. Smith and Mrs. Napolitano. Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Chudkowski?
Yes.
Would you like to abstain on the December meeting?
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Abstain from the December meeting.
And then on the January meeting? Okay. Mrs. Maldonado?
Abstain for December, yes to January.
Thank you. Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Okay. And now we move to our favorite part of the board meeting, our student council representatives. Morgan?
Good evening, Board of Education members and administrators. My name is Morgan Coontz, SWMHS Student Council Board of Education Representative. I would like to begin with clubs and activities. At the high school, led by Colonel Tomasi and Master Sergeant Dalton, our Air Force JROTC cadets flew on a KC-46, a huge Air Force refueling tanker, as it refueled Air Force fighter jets that flew alongside it in formation. The cadets were also allowed into the cockpit. It was a great experience for all who went. Some business students had an informative day at the Rutgers Business School, participating in the Rutgers University Business for Youth Program. A few student council board members attended the NJASC Winter Convention at the College of New Jersey. They attended various workshops with other schools to learn more about how to be leaders and how to get students more involved with school activities. Congratulations to Mr. Alkalea and Sue, everyone's favorite janitor, for being awarded with Staff of the Month for January. The high school guidance department kicked off the scheduling process for students in grade nine through 11 on January 7th. A scheduling video was shown in all English classes, and students are able to add their course requests for next year and on course now through February 7th. Our AP and Academy informational session was held on Thursday, January 9th. The interactive program detailed our Advanced Placement Program, available courses, syllabi, curriculum, and rigor. Also, the academy teachers provided an overview of our career academics. The seniors and their families were invited to the financial aid night on January 9th. The students and their families were able to start and complete their FAFSA application. Seniors are now required to complete their FAFSA or submit a waiver for graduation. Next Tuesday, the eighth grade students and their families are invited to attend the freshman tip-off and parent guardian orientation. The night will begin with an activities fair, and then the students can attend the basketball game, while their parents and guardians will attend a presentation by Mrs. Sekola and the curriculum supervisors to learn about the high school programs and services. Last week, the school counselors finished their freshman foundation series. The counselors conducted three class lessons during the semester, including helpful hints for high school students, transition skills, career exploration, career interest inventory, and accomplished resolution skills. Coming up is the junior parent night on February 5th. Junior presentations by the school counselors for college and career planning and eighth grade and grade eight scheduling presentations on February 6th. Moving on to sports. Congratulations to Mackenzie Hastings from the field hockey team, who received the Kyle's Crew Scholarship at the New Jersey Field Hockey Coaches Association banquet. Likewise, we congratulate Lillian Heidelberg from the girls swim team, who was named the New Jersey State Interscholastic Athletic Association High School National Girls and Women in Sports Day Sayerville recipient during the Rutgers University National Girls and Women in Sports Day. The basketball and cheer team had a blast with the Sayerville Junior Bomber Cheerleaders and basketball players during Junior Bomber Night. The high school cheerleaders led an amazing performance with the Junior Bomber Cheerleaders during halftime. The wrestling team took third place in the Minutemen Classic Tournament. They were just two points shy of the championship and had two weight division champions and eight wrestlers that placed fourth. They also defeated East Brunswick, St. Thomas Aquinas, and Raritan High Schools to improve their season record to 13-6. The indoor track and field teams performed excellently at the South Jersey Track Coaches Association Meet. On the girls team, Leila Stevenson won a gold medal in the 400, as well as Zayla Khan in shot put. Loyce Anning placed second in the 400, as well as Angelia Lapri in the 2-mile. Sarah Smith earned a bronze medal in the 800 meter, along with Molly Logan in the 2-mile, and Destiny Mullen in shot put. On the boys team, Will Lewis won a gold medal in the pole vault, while Chase Rogers earned a silver medal in the 800, and Mack Lord Mina took home a bronze medal in the 55-meter hurdles. The girls and boys track and field teams continued to impress the county during the Greater Middlesex Conference relays. The girls team won the GMC relay division and took second place overall in the county. Individually, Zayla Khan and Destiny Mullen won a gold medal in shot put. Jada Roque, Loyce Anning, Genali Ben, and Leila Stevenson placed second in the 4x400, as well as Molly Logan, Leila Stevenson, Lucy Logan, and Angelia Lapri in the distance medley relay. Furthermore, Jada Roque, Loyce Anning, Anna Leah Marrero, and Leila Stevenson took home the bronze medal in the 4x200. Likewise, led by Chase Rogers, the boys team placed fifth in the 4x55 hurdles and the sprint medley relay. Congratulations to Yatali Atta, Alicia Peña, Lucy Logan, and Dion O'Say for meddling during the Ridgewood Freshmen and Novice Meet at the Armory. Dion medaled in three events, first in hurdles, second in high jump, and third in the 200 meter. Congratulations to Chiadi Chukwora from the boys' basketball team for scoring with one second left in the game to win the battle against Union High School. We would also like to congratulate Sam Jones for scoring his 1,000th career point during the team's victory over North Brunswick last week. He is the ninth player to reach this milestone, but only one, but one of only a few to do so in his junior year. The team also defeated South Plainfield earlier in the week to improve their season record to 12-2. The girls' basketball team beat Keyport and South River High School to earn their fourth and fifth wins of the season. The boys swim team defeated North Brunswick High School to improve their season record to 5-1. During the meet, Michael Wazenko not only took first place, but he broke his own school record with a new time of 1:46.91, shaving six seconds off his previous record of 1:52.74. During their senior night, the girls' swim team defeated South Plainfield High School to finish their season with a record of 5-2. The boys' team had a chance of winning the division, but they fell to South Plainfield. Although they didn't win the division, the boys gave it their all. Personal bests were achieved all around, and it shows how much hard work and dedication they've put in over the course of the season. Thank you for your time and support.
Excellent job. You know, I think we should change Michael Wazenko's name to Michael Phelps.
I say it to him all the time at swim practice.
He is amazing.
Michael Phelps is here.
But you know, Morg, I was at the swim meet, and I was incredibly impressed by this one female swimmer in, I think it was the freestyle relay. And this swimmer got the team off on such a big lead. Who was that swimmer?
It may have been me. I don't know.
It was definitely you. I'm so proud of you. You just went, you came out of the gate, and you created this humongous lead, and your sister and everybody else just followed it up. What a tremendous meet. Kudos to both teams and the parents of both teams. What a turnout. That place was so loud.
It was packed.
It was so packed, so loud. What a fitting way to end the team season for both teams. So, great job.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Morgan. Alana?
Good evening, Board of Education members and administrators. My name is Alana Serignis, Sayerville Middle School Student Council Board of Education representative. Here's what is going on in Sayerville Middle School. The student council executive board attended the NJASC Winter Conference on Wednesday, January 8th at TCNJ. The executive board presented the Anything Goes Assembly in a workshop full of other student leaders. We received very positive feedback from both students and other advisors who attended the presentation. The PTO will host the Sayerville Middle School Tricky Try and Handbag Bingo on Friday, January 31st. Tickets are currently on sale. The Odyssey of the Mind currently has three teams preparing for the regional round of the competition in February. Now on to Sayerville Middle School athletics. The basketball program had an exciting time at the Sayerville Middle School pep rally. The school brought so much positive energy, and the girls had a blast. The girls' basketball teams are having a very successful season. The blue team is 5-1 and picked up a thrilling one-point victory over Middlesex last week. They return to action at home tomorrow at 4:30 against North Brunswick. The girls' grade team will take on Timothy Christian at home on Thursday at 4:30. Come check out a game and see how these hard-working girls in action. The GMC Wrestling Tournament took place on Saturday, January 18th. The following Sayerville Middle School wrestlers participated. Wilmer Medina, CJ Mora, CC Flores, Vincent Galante, Shane Walsh, Ricardo Garcia, Lucas Kay, Kristen Colom, Aiden Alberta, Marcos Peña, and Richard Oh, oh. Hector Felicio and Ravi Kontos placed second. John DeMild and Patrick Wallace placed third. Marcos Peña placed fifth. Jabril Carvin placed fourth. This concludes the 2024-2025 Sayerville Middle School Wrestling Season. We wish our eighth graders the best of luck on future endeavors. The middle school cheerleading team hosted the Winter Pep Rally on Monday, December 23rd. They are currently preparing for the NJCGCA State Championship, while attending basketball games to support our athletes. They are hosting a craft night at the Bombers Beyond Cafe on Thursday, February 13th at 6:00 p.m. The Sayerville Middle School cheerleading teams, along with the SWMHS cheerleading team, will be hosting a showcase before states on February 19th at 7:00 p.m. in the SWMHS main gym. We will also be celebrating our eighth-grade cheerleaders that evening. All are invited to attend. The cheerleaders are currently selling t-shirts to celebrate the 20th season. Please see an athlete if interested. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak on the behalf of the Sayerville Middle School.
Yay! Great job, Alana. Alana, you're in the competition cheer team, correct? Excellent. You have a big competition coming up.
Oh, also, if you're interested in buying a t-shirt, you could come see me.
I'll come see you then.
Okay.
Great job, Alana.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alana. Okay. At this time, I have no comments. Mr. Smith, will you please read the district highlights?
I would love to, but Morgan covered most of them, so.
I'll read them anyway.
I will. Congratulations to members of the Sayerville War Memorial High School Future Business Leaders of America Club, who placed at the recent New Jersey Future Business Leaders of America Regional Championship. They had an impressive record of 13 regional first-place champions. In March, they'll compete in the state championship in Atlantic City. Congratulations to the Sayerville War Memorial High School Academic Competition Team for qualifying for the state championships. Awesome. Congratulations to the Sayerville War Memorial High School Malia Emery, who was named the 2024 U.S. Paralympics Track and Field High School All-American. Congratulations to the high school competition cheer team for winning first place and being crowned grand champion in the varsity all-music mega-division of the Impact Cheer and Dance Competition, as well as first place in the varsity game day division. Congratulations to Annalise Gazala and Alisa Ravel. Sayerville War Memorial High School Art Workshop capstone students will have their artwork displayed at the Barry Campbell Gallery in New York City from January 24th to the 26th. Their drawings will be part of the annual Postcards from the Edge exhibition. Congratulations to Michael Wazenko from the Sayerville War Memorial High School Swim Team, who during a recent match against North Brunswick not only took first place, he broke his own school record with a new time of 1:46.91, shaving seconds off his previous record of 1:52.74 seconds. Congratulations to Sam Jones of the Sayerville War Memorial High School Boys Basketball Team for scoring his 1,000th career point during the victory over North Brunswick. He's only the ninth player to reach this milestone and one of the very few to do it in his junior year. Congratulations to Mack Hastings from the Sayerville War Memorial High School Field Hockey Team, who received the Kyle's Crew Scholarship at the New Jersey Field Hockey Coaches Association banquet. And finally, congratulations to Lillian Heidelberg from the Sayerville War Memorial High School Girls Swim Team, who was named New Jersey's State Interscholastic Athletic Association's High School National Girls and Women in Sports Sayerville recipient during the Rutgers University National Girls and Women's in Sports event. And those are the district highlights.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Dr. Labby, you want to start us off with our presentations, please?
Yes, Mrs. Bloom. I'm thrilled to tell you that we're going to be resuming our discussions about the 2025-2026 budget. Tonight, we'll be going over our school budgets, as well as our athletic budget. Later in presentations, Mr. Glock-Malloy will give you a very brief presentation on our school's safety data cycle-one submission. Likewise, Ms. Hill will also give you a very brief synopsis of the 2023-2024 audit. So let's begin with our budget presentations. We always start with the staff members that have to get up early. And that would, of course, be our high school administration, who is here, led by Mr. Glahusky. But I would like to give a shout-out to all of our incredible administrators from our administrative team, who have come out tonight to support their building budget presentations. So if I could ask the high school administration, led by Mr. Glahusky, to make their way to the podium, so that you can give your 2025-2026 budget presentation. Mr. Glahusky?
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Glahusky, AKA Glu, to everyone. My vice principals, which are standing behind me, are Mr. Salem, Mrs. Rouski, Mrs. Carey, and Mr. Martucci. First, thank you for having us this evening, and thank you to the Board of Education for all the support that you give us at Sayerville War Memorial High School. It is truly an honor. Second, thank you to Dr. Labby and his leadership, as well as all of the central office personnel sitting around these tables this evening for their support and guidance and their amazing efforts every single day to support us. As I go through this presentation tonight, I would like you to think of three parts of a theme. One is student achievement and the improvement of our test scores and supporting our students. Second, our student pride in our school. And finally, overall facilities and the importance of adding to what we already have. By the amazing report by Morgan and Mr. Smith, you can see that we have a lot going on at Sayerville War Memorial High School. And we're extremely proud, as a staff, as an administrative staff and team, to have all those amazing accolades and everything that our students gain on a daily basis from the time they walk in until the time they walk out late in the evening. So '23-'24, we had two goals. The first one, and generally, I work with Ms. Maharana, Dr. Maharana, as well as Mrs. Grossman, in regard to our student test scores, specifically grade 11 in mathematics. That was a considerable approach at trying to reach 70% of our 11th-grade students in many demographics to obtain, thank you, attain a specific score. And that score for us was 70%. We did come up a little bit short. We ended up around 62% of our students with that 11th-grade test, but up from 56%, which is a really great increase forward. But I do need to say one thing, that Dr. Labby, as well as Mrs. Grossman, supported our staff, as well as our kids, and helped us with tutoring sessions last year to gain that increase in test scores. And I believe that was a major piece to that goal. Second, second goal last year, which we're continuing with this year, is to increase our school pride. Many of you know that myself, as well as my admin team and a lot of our staff members are graduates of Sayerville War Memorial High School. And we look to pass that support in terms of school pride off to our current students and our future students. It's very important to us, and it's something that we strive to do. We did that, and we achieved that goal by starting a student-led school spirit committee. We listened to their voices. We tried to get feedback as much as possible on anything new that they wanted to do last year. We did utilize social media platforms, as well as as many communication tools that we can to reel in and to get the support of the school community for that. We did survey them on a number of occasions, as well as checked out our physical space and what we already have to start improving on the school pride within our school. In the end, we tried to foster an environment where all feel excited about coming to school. And I think, and I believe, we did that. And that's something that we continue to work on going forward. Sorry. Now, moving on to '24-'25, again, we decided to look at mathematics as an academic improvement. So this year, we're working towards that 11th-grade test in mathematics for the graduation rate, to get somewhere in between 60 and 63% of passing rate. Yes, it's a little bit less than it was a year ago. However, we decided to take a little bit lighter steps at increasing our student scores. We are going to do that. As we look at data, our baseline assessments are a little bit lower than last year's class, so that's why we took a lower view of what we can increase to. We do have progress monitoring, as well as data review often. And ultimately, we're going to try to celebrate those achievements as we do, as much as we can for our kids. Again, I'd like to have a shout-out to Dr. Maharana for all the work that she has done behind the scenes in crunching that data with her staff, as well as informing the administration of where we're going and how we're going to get there. Again, we're going to continue working on school pride in our school. Again, working through that school spirit committee and working on many different things that our kids would like to see in our school. So that's another goal that we're going to continue. It's kind of part of our three-to-five-year plan, that we continue that in terms of school pride. Moving on to '25-'26, we're going to focus continually on the use of data to drive instruction through RTI data, as well as key departmental data discussions. We have data discussions often within our departments, math, science, social studies, language arts, et cetera. That's ongoing. That's something that we continue to do, to strive for better improvement in terms of our school scores. One thing I would like to focus on is the funding to support our students with Tier III services, as well as Tier II boot camp and academy needs. I feel, and we all feel, that helping those students before school, during school, anytime that would be beneficial for tutoring purposes, would only help them in those areas. I do want to mention the advent of PairDeck. Our online support is something that also we utilize and try to promote within our school for that purpose as well. As you could tell, continue fostering positive school spirit and pride. That's something that's ongoing for our climate and culture aspect of our school. But more specifically, branding our high school with a central theme, wall designs, and more. We think it's very important to publicize the emphasis on bombers and what we have at Sayerville War Memorial High School. Creating a sense of unity through collaborative efforts with teachers and students. I'll elaborate on that momentarily. Organizing regular activities, as well as new activities that are going to support our community in positive ways. Look at trying to formulate student-led initiatives. More importantly, we're going to listen, continue to listen to our students about improving school spirit, as well as our school environment. Again, social media platforms has become very, very important. And ultimately cultivating a vibrant and enthusiastic school spirit to foster that sense of belonging at Sayerville High School. So, student achievement is ongoing in school-wide. Creating educational spaces that contribute to engaging and motivating instructional strategies. Those learning boot camps we spoke about, Opportunity Room, National Honor Society Extra Help, Tier II services, Tier III services, our learning academies. It's all wrapped up in what we're trying to do to support our kids. Continue to implement instructional methods that focus on differentiation and engaging lessons. That's one thing that we take a lot of pride in as administrators and supervisors to support our teachers in terms of differentiation and engaging lessons. Continue targeting students with specific academic needs is absolutely a priority through our RTI process and tiered interventions. This one's extremely important to us. Continue to give our students positive experiences to provide them with knowledge for life after high school. That means unique, engaging field trips, expert speakers, anything that we could give them in terms of positive experiences. And finally, in student achievement, attendance is important. I gotta hand it to my administrators, at the time that they spend on working with our students and counseling methods, in terms of attendance and where and when we need to get those kids in school. Climate and culture. Continue to promote social, emotional learning. Our SEO committee, which Mr. Salem and our vice principals work through each year. Our Winter Wellness Fair is a big hit with our staff and our students. The Student Advisory Council is a significant component of improving climate and culture. Again, Mr. Salem, as well as our vice principals and Dr. Agulies, listen to feedback and ideas that our students have very often. Continue to promote the theme of bombers throughout Sayerville War Memorial High School, as I mentioned before. Continue with school spirit committee. And this is what I wanted to add this year, is staff and student collaboration. A few things that we've started already this year. Our Friday music choice during passing. Students and staff choose what music they want to listen to, which on Fridays is a really nice climate emphasis. Kids enjoy it, staff enjoys it. I know our secretaries at the high school love it. We see them on occasion dancing. Friday Morning Live, something that these staff members have brought to our attention. Mr. Salem is a part of that, as one of our drummers. But on Friday morning, which started just this past Friday, we're going to include students and staff in performances for students and staff in performances from 7:00 a.m. to 7:30 a.m., where students arrive with some really good tunes in the morning. So that's something that we're starting up, is going really well. Bomber-themed hallway decals, positive messages, display monitors, and accessories. Basically celebrating the bombers, as well as our students and the activities that they're involved in. I absolutely love principal shout-outs whenever I can get them. Today was Sammy Jones's shout-out for his 1,000th point during his junior year. His father is an old friend of mine, and Sammy actually played baseball for me when he was this big, taking jump shots at second base. So it was really great to do that as much as we can. Again, school branding and spirit is very important. This year, we've talked about the class councils painting some type of bomber-related positive messages on the walls in certain areas of the school, which will be happening more this spring. Bomber logos and spirit designs throughout the school. And school store, which opened up near the lunchroom, is going really well. We're going to continue working with that, open two days a week, every lunch period. And we do have an online store, as many of you probably know, which was a large undertaking. And the advent of electronic payment systems at the high school have become very positive in terms of our school culture, as we do a lot with that now. As far as technology is concerned, working with Mr. Glock Malloy and his technicians, continuing to add display monitors throughout the school. It's the best way that we can show our students faces and accomplishments throughout the school community. Adding some more security cameras, as well as more security measures are on the horizon, and we love that about the security aspect. Facilities. As always, I'm a pretty big furniture guy. Whatever we can get for the teachers and make their jobs easier and more productive and engaging is all-in for us. Furniture, whiteboard tables was a hit, and any technology that they see fit. The school building itself, the gymnasium and athletic area, our wall padding in the gymnasium, as well as our sound system. Our sound system, I'll say it, is ultimately very bad. I think maybe one or two of the four are working presently, and it's time to upgrade. I believe it's over 10 years old. Something that these class councils spoke to me about, new concession stand, or at least the shell with insulation and any improvements that we can make their lives a bit easier as they work at athletics events or other events. Side softball field, baseball field entrance, those stairs are a little bit beaten up. We'd love to spruce them up for our teams. Some areas that need to be painted. Again, school branding, interior wall graphics. We did budget for changing our bomber military wall from the B Wing hallway to the A Wing hallway ramp, where we would have two sides honoring all our military honorees from Sereville One Memorial High School. Media Center, to go along with all those interior wall graphics, a poster banner maker would be phenomenal, just like the middle school. And personnel, we're requesting two needed stipend positions, one for Assistant Custodial Schools funds, which with the advent of the online payment system has become cumbersome, and we would like to have some help for the current custodian of funds. It's a large volume, it needs meticulous organization. She's done a great job. However, I believe, we believe that we need a little bit of help there to track all of that activity. And with the advent of the Jon Bon Jovi Pack Center and Music Suite, a Music and Recording Arts Program Engineer, we're looking to have a new after-school program in which we would be utilizing the new studio. I'll call it From Soup to Nuts. It's an absolutely state-of-the-art facility over there, and we would like to continue to teach our kids about the music and recording business, focusing on obviously music and the recording arts. How'd I do? Thanks.
Any questions by the board?
I do have a question.
Yes.
One, well, the last thing you said, the Music and Recording Arts Program Engineer, does that have to be a teacher?
Yeah, it should be a certified teacher in that field.
Okay, that's good. And then my other question was, oh, my question was this. How are the kids responding to the Bon Jovi win? Because they're younger, I mean, he was 80 star, but I think he's famous enough that they know him. Are they reacting well to that?
Yeah, I mean, I've been trying to get away from it a little bit because it was so huge in October, and it's been going great, and, you know, every day we walk in, it's like, wow, you know, that's there. But the kids have become more, I think, become more aware of the journey. All right, you know, he actually, you know, put that when we were talking, the journey from Sereville to obviously where he is now. I think they put two and two together. They see all the accolades, they see all the hard work. You know, the kids that I talk to are from kind of that end of the school, in terms of your music, your arts, your performing arts. But they see, it's kind of grown where the kids understand that this is a kid that came out of Sereville, worked really hard to get to where he is, and it's noticeable. You know, it's, you know, for me and for you, it's huge. You know, it's like, oh, my God, it's Jon Bon Jovi and what he's done with his career. But for these kids, I think this is just a stepping stone to bigger careers, better careers, more experiences. We do have an awesome set of teachers down there in the first place, but yes.
Which is triggering aspirations.
I think it is too. I think there's going to be things on the horizon that I've already thought about in terms of maybe their involvement again, or other, you know, several graduates. You know, we're obviously always big on bringing several graduates back. You know, I'm hoping that opens the door for others. And there's things that we have to start talking about a little bit more. But it's been great. It's been fantastic, you know?
Very good. Good job on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Had a great team, by the way.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Glukowski, one quick question for you. Last year, you guys strived high, aimed high with your 70% goal in math. You had a great increase of over 6%. Fantastic. You didn't quite make the goal, but you had a significant increase. Why this year are we setting a lower goal?
It's not a lower goal. It's a goal that, our baseline is a little bit lower than it was for this past year. So instead of taking, shooting for 70%, which I've always been someone that goes for the gusto, let's do this and try to get it done. But stepping back and looking at all the data and understanding where our kids are presently, it ultimately was something that I don't believe we should shoot for that goal. We should take the next step in trying to progress, you know? Mrs. Grossman, any thoughts? No, thank you.
So one of the things that we do each year during the admin retreat is work on our goals for our department and things like that. So we have to start with the cohort of students that we're setting the goal for. So the data that was used for the class of 2026, which is the current juniors in mathematics, it's actually the ninth-grade math test that they take. So we look at the makeup of the group, we look at, you know, ESL, special education populations, we look at what the baseline was, and then we go from there. So the goal actually is the same in growth than it was, you know, in previous years. It's just the percentages are adjusted based on how much we feel we can, you know, move the group up to that number. And the good thing is, is that the New Jersey Department of Education is starting to focus more on growth than they are on the, you know, proficiency cuts. So it's a good thing.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glukowski.
So Principal Glukowski, I'd just like to say one thing. Since your time as principal at the middle school and to the high school, I've heard a lot of feedback from both faculty and staff. Obviously, it's all been positive. You've had an impact, a positive impact on our test scores. You've increased school pride and engagement in both our faculty and our students. You've provided, not only, you've come up with a balance of discipline and a positive learning structure, but you've also balanced that with the warm spirit and heart. That's rare to find, that combination. And I just want to thank you and all your staff for everything you've done in another great year and another great...
We're not done yet.
I know, I know you're not.
I appreciate it, Mr. Fernandez, and it takes, it takes a lot of people and their expertise and make everything that we try to strive for, you know? And I mean, the ones behind me, you know, you listen to me every day about, what do you think about this? What do you think about that? You know, and they come back to me and say the same thing. Glue, what do you think about doing this or doing that? And a lot of times, I say, go for it. And it's really, it's come down to what we know, and that's taking care of kids, you know, and making sure we're striving forward rather than going backward, you know? And we talk about it daily. We all talk about it daily. And since coming back to the high school, it's been outstanding, not just my team, but everybody that walks into my door with ideas and strategies and where we're going next, or, you know, what do you want to do tomorrow? But what I love about the staff is they're starting now to come up with ideas that they want to do versus what we want to do. And it's really gratifying to see, you know? And it's, we got a lot of work to do, you know, one step at a time, but we'll get there, you know? But I appreciate it. I really do appreciate it. And we're always there to listen.
I see, and you're doing an amazing job, and everything you've just said, I've, I know it's not lip service because I've heard that from our staff as well.
Thank you.
And our students, by the way. So that's really amazing when you've had an impact on both like that. So thank you for everything you do, and you continue to do as well as your staff. You're all doing an amazing job.
Appreciate it. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Glukowski. And thank you for...
Thank you.
The high school administration. At this, give a minute. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Magistro and Ms. Obruck up. They are the principals at the Cheesequake Preschool and the Solover Preschool, respectively. They are going to be giving you our Project Before preschool budget presentation. However, please keep in mind that I would say about 85 to 90% of their budget is paid for through our preschool expansion aid and not the general fund. Ms. Magistro?
Hello, for those of you who do not know me, my name is April Magistro, and I'm the principal of Project Before at Cheesequake. And tonight, you'll also be hearing from Nina Obruck, who is the principal of Project Before at Solover School. So thank you so much for listening, and as Dr. Labby said, we, basically, we have, we work under the preschool expansion aid, so our budget is a little bit different. So, but thank you for listening, and we would like to share some information with you about curriculum and instruction, oh, assessment, sorry. Curriculum and assessment, instruction goes along with it, so you know how it's all together. So our curriculum is Tools of the Mind. Looks different here. So our curriculum is Tools of the Mind. It has not changed. We love Tools of the Mind. We keep growing with Tools of the Mind. When we have new teachers come in, like year-one teachers, they receive training from Grow NJ Kids. So everyone is always, I thought he was going to say, always receiving training. So it is, it's a very good curriculum. We do enjoy it. This year, as we progress, this year, we had visitation from Tools of the Mind. We did have classrooms that were observed, and we had trainers that came from Tools of the Mind. They observe classrooms, they walk around, they give instruction right there, a lot of support. They let you know exactly what's going on in your classrooms, how you can use your curriculum with the most fidelity that you can, and they're there to help you improve. They watch the teachers, the paraprofessionals, they go in and out of your classrooms. So we have a lot of visits from the state. They're always in and out. Of course, we approve them to come in and out, but they are in and out. And it's just not strange, there's coming around, the state comes to visit us a lot. Age of Learning is our new digital program. It is, last year, we did pilot one or the other. I know Solover did one, we did the other. One was math, one was reading, and this year, we are doing both. So we are using our Age of Learning, our math, and our reading. This digital platform is used in the classrooms. We are increasing our time as the students get acclimated to it, because when you start a digital program, it seems that at first, they don't really know how to use it, but now they're getting the hang of it. So when I visit, they'll say, the robot was jumping around today. So they get used to it, just like they do with any digital program. We have extended it to sending it home to parents. So now we have our home and our school connected, and also, we started that over winter break. There was only a little bit of usage, but I know when it goes home, like over the summer, parents will come, you know, they will join and they will start using it as well. And the data, we will just keep collecting the data on that. We are continuing to use FONCE and PENAL. FONCE and PENAL is what you hear about when we have in the elementary schools. So we do use it in the preschool. What we do is we enhance our story lab with our interactive read-alouds. So with FONCE and PENAL, interactive read-alouds, we actually combine them with our story labs, and we just enhance them. So teachers, we've been using it for a few years now, so what do they need? It seems like they need a little bit more with storytelling and connecting with literature. So that's what we worked on this year. So what we did, we, I lost my spot. Hold on. So we did create deeper connections with literature through interactive lessons. Classes receive professional development and materials to enhance storytelling, and it is aligned with our story lab, our Tools of the Mind story lab component. Okay. So along with our assessment, we do Teaching Strategies Gold, and that is an online assessment. What we do enjoy about this type of assessment is, this is teacher observation, so teachers observe their students, and they document by, they can take photos, they can take anecdotal notes, and then they will upload it into Teaching Strategies, where then they will, they will be able to take their notes and decide, like, have their child reached the marks? Are they mastering certain areas? And then we look at color bands, much like you would in Linkit, and we decide what students need help in certain areas, and that helps the teachers. Okay? Teaching Strategies Gold, we did have a lot of training on that on Staff Development Day, so thank you for that. And teachers, let's see, oh, we are assessing with three areas right now. So SEL, math, and literacy. So that's what we're assessing at this time. I'm watching my director over there. She's not looking, okay. So I will keep going. So as far, ooh, lucky. So as far as teacher support, we do get a lot in the preschool. We're very lucky. So we do have PICCs and PERS, and it is a lot of really good support. So let me explain to you how it works. We have a lot of acronyms in preschool. Sometimes I want to hold up a sign that says what everything is. But PICCs are preschool instructional coaches, and they support curriculum on a daily basis. They conduct ECHRS, which is something else you'll hear about, which is another evaluation, and monitor teaching strategies. So what they will do is, once you are, we have three markers for teaching strategies through the year, and you collect your data, then you will take a look at your data. And that's what PICCs will go over. They go over all your information, and they will help you, they support you, let you know the areas where students need support, and that's when the PICCs are there to support you. Our PERS are preschool intervention and referral specialists. They work on PERT, which is our preschool intervention referral team. Am I there? So like I had said, our PICCs, they will conduct ECHRS evaluations, much like when we get a visit from the state and they do ECHRS, our PICCs will do that, and they go over information with our classrooms. But our PERS, they do something that's called a T-PoD. Okay? And that is a different type of assessment. But it works, we, that focuses more on our pyramid model and behaviors. So the pyramid model is a framework that we use in the school. It promotes like social and emotional support development, and it's a tiered approach, just much like a pyramid. I think that's it for me. Teaching Strategies Gold, we talked about professional development. That's it? There we go?
Good evening, everyone. Grow NJ Kids ensures quality of, the quality of early learning in public and private preschools across the state. The quality of these programs is determined through a rating scale. NJ Kids, Grow NJ Kids looks at five different areas. First, clean, safe, indoor and outdoor environments. Second, they look at the curricula. Third, programs that engage with families in the community. Fourth, that the staff are well-trained and have appropriate professional development opportunities. And fifth, that the administration and management are effective. What the ratings mean, they help families determine the quality of childcare programs in their area. Programs with three or more stars exceed standards, and that is the rating that Project Before is seeking. Before is seeking. As a program, we've completed a detailed self-assessment, worked with Grow NJ Kids professionals to make improvements to our overall program, and are in the process of being formally assessed. A few program highlights for you, along with the other dis, our other district schools, Project Before started after-school sessions for students new to the country or those whose first language is other than English to help increase English proficiency. Family involvement, uh, we employ a community parent involvement specialist, part of whose job is to organize workshops for our Project Before families, for example, how to foster independence in preschool. We turnkey professional development quite often, um, our coach and our interventionists spend a lot of their time in classrooms, working with our teachers, giving them, excuse me, insight as to what those teachers need most. So, based on this, workshops are created by our PIC and PERS to directly address their needs. Project Before participates each November in an annual turkey trot, uh, we partner with Bombers Beyond to collect non-perishables for local families, and we celebrate the act of giving itself. This year, Pro, Project Before will be hosting fall and spring unified sports programs at each location. School newsletters are distributed monthly at Solover and Cheesequake. We are working on expanding our classroom libraries, continuing to build print resources for our students, focusing on the F and P materials that they will use in elementary school, and CPR, school-wide certification. As part of our Grow NJ Kids rating, all teachers and powers at Solover and Cheesequake have been trained in CPR and basic first aid. During the coming year, uh, for Tools in the Mind, uh, as April told you, we get a lot of professional development, um, we would like to continue that professional development for our newly hired staff, uh, refreshers for those who have been with us. Age of Learning, we would like to increase our student usage, um, April mentioned a homeschool connection, so we are hoping to increase, uh, student use at home. We would like to add our EZ, the early screening inventory to Linkit. Fanta and Penel, continuing to expand our classroom libraries, uh, working on using common language that will ease the transition between preschool and kindergarten, increase our teachers proficiency and treat, in using Teaching Strategies Gold. And for professional development, uh, best practices and curriculum-specific turnkey trainings by our PICs, our PERS, and our technology integration leads. Any questions for us?
Questions for Ms. Magistro or Ms. Obruck?
Question for you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, go ahead. Hi, so when you were going through your presentation, you mentioned four or five different assessments that are used, uh, how many of those assessments are, uh, required for, by the teachers to produce them and evaluate them and submit the information for them, the data?
So, like Nina explained, we do the EZ, and that is for all the three-year-olds that come into the program, they, and any incoming, for anyone who's new. So, just like in the elementary, someone comes new, they, they receive an assessment.
So, that's a one-time assessment, that's not-
One-time assessment, well, it can be re-given, once there is, if you, um, receive your support, you go over the EZ, then you receive support, then you might assess certain areas again to see how much progress the student has made.
Is this the assessment when you were talking about taking photos and taking notes?
That is Teaching Strategies Gold, and for Teaching Strategies, yes, the teachers will, it's a, what we do like about it, and what the teachers like, it's, it's an observation. So, you don't pull students to give an assessment. What you're doing is, as they are working, when they come into the classroom, they might do something, like when they come in and they decide, are you wearing a green shirt today? And Mikey goes and he decides, she can take a photo of that and upload it.
Okay.
So, it's easier than pulling a student and actually keeping them, I want to say, isolated and saying, okay, what color is this, what color is this, what color is this?
And it doesn't take away from instructional time.
It's just during.
And that is what I was actually, you know, thinking about, is, is how many assessments the teachers have to do, because it does take away and it bogs them down sometimes with all the extra data work that they need to do, but this sounds like it's, it's just seamless and incorporated right into the-
It's during their day.
Yeah.
So, if, if they can catch it, you know, if they can catch it.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's how it works, it's an observational, they collect, and then when they go through, through Teaching Strategies, then they can decide, did my chat, did my student master that? And they can click, oh, they mastered, oh, we need more support here.
Right, right.
What do we do, we see our PICs, let's see, so that's how that works.
Right, thank you.
Sure.
Any more questions?
Just one quick one.
Go ahead, Mrs.
Will this be our first go-round getting a rating from the Grow NJ Kids?
Yes!
It is.
So, that's fantastic.
We're excited. So, if we can't, we're gonna have a big giant star.
Oh, yeah, I expect three stars from you guys.
We pulled a lot of stars.
Because you're doing a great job.
Yes, everybody has been working really hard, we're very lucky, the preschool team has always been, like, we always pull together, and it's been, it's been a lot, it's been a lot. Getting an entire program CPR certified, thanks, Dan. It was a lot, it was a lot, but we get it done. Thank you, our director's great.
Thank you so much, ladies.
Thank you, thank you.
And not to steal their thunder, but they have quite a bit of teachers that are PSYOP trained, correct? Can you explain what PSYOP training is, Ms. Grossman?
So, uh, PSYOP training is where you, um, train in sheltered instructional observational protocols, uh, basically helping general education teachers to support multilingual learners. We have over fifty, um, students who were identified through home language survey in our pre-k's that would be multilingual learners and ESL serviceable if they were kindergartners. So, we've trained, um, I'm, I'm pretty sure we're over seventy-five percent of our staff members in, uh, Project Before.
And one-
Sorry, this has helped with our after-school program that just started with the MLL students, because the teachers running the program are PSYOP trained, so it's been great.
And Ms. Burns, you want to, uh, share the good news about our third school? We're just about to sign the lease.
Yes, um, we're in the process of signing, um, another new location at OLV, so hopefully within the next couple of days, so we can start getting in there and planning, and then we're excited.
And through the mastery of Ms. Burns and Ms. Hill, they have figured a way to financially make it possible for us to keep all three schools. Um, so we'll be shifting some classes around a little bit, but, um, we'll, we'll have three public schools now for preschool, Cheesequake School, the Solover School, and, uh, soon-to-be, fingers crossed, uh, as we wait for the Is to get dotted and the Ts to get crossed, um, at the, uh, our Lady of Victory School.
So, they worked out all the bugs?
Uh, I think so.
Pretty much?
Yeah.
And the diocese likes to drag their feet.
Yeah.
Great job, thank you.
Great job to everyone in Project Before. Go home and get some sleep. And now, if I could ask Mr. Nurnberger in the middle school administration to approach the podium, so that they can provide you with the Sayville Middle School two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget presentation. Now, as you can see, Mr. Martucci does double duty. He's our Superman.
He looks like him. Clark Kent.
Okay, am I good now? Okay, I know, I know. Uh, Dr. Labby, uh, members of the board and our central office, good evening. Before I get started, I just want to say thank you for your support, uh, you make our job easier, uh, by all the support you give us on a daily basis, so thank you very much. My name's Scott Nurnberger, principal of Sayville Middle School, behind me are the rest of the administrative team, uh, Mrs. Romero, Mrs. Rego, and Mr. Martucci, who may also be Clark Kent, we're not sure just yet. Um, okay, so I wanted to go over a few things first, uh, one would be our goals and achievements from the previous year. These achievements really are, are shared, uh, you know, with the previous administration, Mr. Gluhusky, Mr. Jagu, and Mrs. Rego, and then our admin team here, you know, we inherited such a great building, we really just took the baton from the previous administrating, administration and kept running in that direction, so it's a shared achievement. We've got a couple of achievements here, one in instruction, uh, one with, um, attendance, and the other in climate and culture. So, if you take a look, our first, um, goal was to increase math scores in Linkit testing. So, what is Linkit? Linkit is an online data warehouse that also provides us with standardized tests, Form A, B, and C. We take, the kids take Form A in the beginning of the year, Form B in the middle, and Form C at the end, so we took a look at Form A and Form C, and we wanted to see growth, and we did. We had eighteen percent of our kids, uh, demonstrate proficiency as compared, with this Form C as compared to Form A, so we did a great job with that. We did that through supporting our staff with training and through the RTI process and tiered interventions, and I'm going to go into that a little bit more, you're going to hear those words, um, throughout the rest of my presentation as well. Attendance, we were able to go from a hundred and seventy-five, uh, chronically, uh, absent students to a hundred and sixty-five. While that number is still too high, we did see, you know, some growth there and some success. We utilized the RTI process, response to intervention, uh, and that tiered intervention system, uh, and really focused on parent engagement and discussion, and that, when you really get down to it, um, that conversation with parents, uh, we really saw the most results there, so I'm, I'm excited to see what those numbers look like this year, I anticipate them going down again. Uh, and then climate and culture, we had a Little Words project, uh, our pep rallies, anything goes, uh, you may have seen me in a turkey costume once or twice, uh, Project Positivity, which is run through our guidance department, uh, and ABC Groups, which is our venture-based counseling run through our guidance department as well, and then we were lucky enough to be able to start the eighth-grade trip last year to Eagles Nest Day Camp, which was fantastic as well, really adding to the climate and culture of our building, and we had our students work towards those goals, uh, you know, especially with our, our discipline system and demerits that we implemented last year, uh, the kids knew, um, where that line was and really, you know, put their best foot forward and showed the best version of themselves throughout the year to get to these points. So, uh, we had a successful year last year, we're in the middle of, uh, this year, and things have been, uh, headed in the right direction as well. Uh, our goals this year for our facilities were to create permanent education spaces for academic support services. We have a lot of support services for our students, ASI, ESS, OT, PT, speech, uh, you know, all of these support services here for our kids, and we're looking to expand to house them, um, give them the space that they need. Uh, we were able to renovate all of our science labs, D-29, uh, we were able to revise and renovate that, thank you to Mr. Coleman's Burger and Buildings and Grounds for doing a great job with that, and also get the furniture to upgrade all of our science rooms, thank you so much for approving that last year, what a difference, uh, those rooms are when you walk in now with the, with the new science tables and chairs, uh, really has, has added to the instruction in those rooms. We've also, uh, been able to put more horseshoe tables, uh, in our academic rooms, classrooms. The horseshoe tables are used for small group instruction, okay, there's a whiteboard service so the kids can draw on it with dry erase markers, but the teachers are able to pull small group and level instruction and differentiate instruction, um, to meet the needs of the students, and those horseshoe tables are vital to that small group success, so thank you very much for all of that. This year, we really took a look at RTI, Response to Intervention, and focused on academic interventions and the RTI team, uh, and we were able to do that and utilize Linkit Intervention Manager, so I just mentioned Linkit, that it's an online data warehouse that also provides, um, standardized tests for us, benchmark tests, but it also now houses all of our data for RTI, um, our interventions, and it tracks the data easily for our, um, our staff to use. Uh, and then Tier Two and Tier Three interventions, thank you for that funding for that, it's vital, academic sport instructors for pull-out and push-in instruction, uh, our morning and afternoon literacy and math academies, and our one-to-one tutoring for our needy students, uh, that are, you know, most in need of support academically, so thank you so much, those are vital programs for us, vital. Uh, and our last one, which was the biggest this year, was our revised master schedule. We wanted to increase time available for remedial enrichment opportunities, and we were able to do that by modifying the schedule, uh, and creating an advisory period, uh, in conjunction with recess and lunch, and what we've been able to do with that, uh, is utilize that time for intervention services, which we just talked about. We also have band and chorus pulling out during this time as well, and students can have time to get caught up on their work. So, it, it's been a major success for us, the kids do still get recess, a little bit, you know, fewer days, but they still get recess, um, and it really has been, uh, a win for us, uh, this year. Looking ahead to next year, uh, we still have a goal of, uh, creating those permanent spaces for our, uh, related services, as I mentioned before. Uh, instruction, we're going to continue to focus on RTI. You may notice that I don't have, uh, a percentage on standardized tests for a goal here, what we're really looking at is the process, okay, the process of instruction, student-centered instruction and interventions in the classroom, and I'm hoping by focusing on the process here, you're going to see those numbers go up as far as our classroom, our, our scores in NJ SLA and Linkit and grades. So, Tier Two and Tier Three interventions, which I mentioned, uh, we also have Success Maker coming in, which is student progress monitoring for mathematics, uh, Momentum, which is a diagnostic screening tool for mathematics as well, and Study Sync, which is an online literacy, literacy system for our language arts teachers. How'd I do, Ms. Grossman? Am I good? Okay, okay, and then our schedule, we're, we're, as we go, we're trying to make it better and better and better. So, next year, one of our goals for our schedule, now that we modified it, is to create a, uh, science lab for advanced sciences. So, any of the advanced sciences that we have, we're looking to create a period and a half block, so they have more time to do exploratory learning in a lab. So, that's one thing we're going to try to, uh, to implement next year as well, and to continue to utilize the advisory and related services for those, that advisory period at twenty minutes. Any questions?
I, I have one question, I didn't, I didn't see, uh, in the budget for more tape.
I needed more, I fell off pretty quick.
For anybody that's, it was for the food drive, right?
It was for the food drive, they, uh, they duct taped me to a wall, I don't know if you saw that on, uh, on Twitter, um, but yeah.
It was a very sticky situation.
It certainly was.
That's fine. He needs more tape, we've got a budget, more tape.
You missed that? You didn't read it in Talk Soup? It was in Talk Soup.
I, I remember, was there a picture there?
Yes.
You missed my picture in Talk Soup?
And I said, I said, I thought he was there all weekend.
Oh, they wanted to leave me up there, yeah, I peeled off, there might be a video also.
Okay, Scott, I'm just going to ask you for our new people to please translate INRS and RTI.
Okay, RTI is Response to Intervention, okay? So, it's exactly how it sounds. We're going to provide an intervention, they're tiered-based interventions, interventions happen in the classroom, uh, they happen in pull-out and push-in models with academic support, there are interventions, um, outside of the classroom as well, before and after school, um, with our academies, and then our, our third tier would be that one-to-one, um, tutoring. The response to intervention is, what we do is we intervene, okay, but then we track data, so we're going to do this, and for a period of time, and we're going to track the student's growth to see if it's working. Okay, so we're really analyzing data to see if what we're doing works. If it doesn't work, we're going to try something new. If it is working, we're going to continue down that road. Okay, so it's really a reflective model for our teachers as well, and I talked about the process before, now our teachers can reflect on what they're doing in the classroom, Tier One interventions, to see if they work for the individual student who may be at risk or we've identified as struggling, uh, and that's part of that process that I hope will influence as well. How'd I do?
Excellent, thank you.
Quick question, sorry.
Yes.
Um, the Linkit Intervention Manager, is that a person or is that a system?
That's a system, so that's part of the Linkit system that I talked about that has that data warehouse, that ha, warehouses all of our, um, test scores and grades, it's all in one place, and now Linkit also provides intervention managers, so we can utilize that data when we track our intervention, so it's much easier. Uh, we get a nice little graph, if the graph's going up, we're happy, if the graph's going down, we need to- If the graph's going down, we need to change. But it's a computer program.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
How is the disciplinary things going at the middle school? Because I know for a while, you know, people were saying it was like a lot of fighting going on, the kids weren't behaving. So, how has that, is that better now that you, the president, the principal for a while now, or the kid's a little afraid of you?
I think our kids are great. You know, there's some issues here and there, you know, like any school, but I think we're off in a right, the right direction. Our staff is engaging, our administration is engaging. We're out in the hallways. I think we've seen the temperature of the cafeteria come down now because we have half the amount of students in there each, each lunch period. So, that's definitely brought down, you know, the energy, you know, they feed off of each other, brought down the energy as well. You know, our kids do a great job. We've got thirteen hundred students and most of them are fantastic, they're all fantastic kids who are just, you know, feeling their way around adolescence and getting through that rough period. But we're definitely in, headed in a great direction.
And I also think that structuring that time after lunch, rather than going out for recess, where they would just wander around, get into groups and get into behavioral problems, has also reduced the amount of behavioral challenges that we've had in the past. So, I think that move to the win period that you referenced earlier was a great decision that is not only yielding great results academically, but also social and emotionally.
Thank you very much, Dr. Labby.
My, my stepdaughter's in eighth grade there now, and her favorite thing that changed this year was that adjusted period during lunch.
That's great.
Because she gets so much more accomplished during.
That's great. I, I love hearing that. And you know, one of the other things too is not only are we dealing with less issues because of the recess, but those things, you know, we don't live in a bubble. Those things spilled over into your afternoon classes as well. If a kid had trouble at recess, or there was a conflict, or who's crying now and can't learn, has to go to guidance, you know, that all spilled over into the afternoon classes. So, keeping that down and minimizing those issues has really benefited our afternoon classes as well.
Yeah, it's so funny to hear you say recess for these kids because today, the kids don't even want to do anything but mostly, not saying all of them, but a lot of them want to just be on their computer or, you know, their hand device, whatever they're using.
On their phones.
Right, on their phones, exactly. Well, on the, exactly, on their phones.
Yes, no, you're right.
So, to say, oh, hey, you got to go do recess, I mean, that's probably like something they would not want to do as much.
So, yeah, I mean, some do, some don't. A lot of them would prefer the more structured time. Our PE teachers do a great job of engaging them in activities, you know, where they do have to interact and problem-solve and work as a team. So, they're all getting that each day. It's just in a more structured environment.
Thank you, Mr. Nurnberger. Great work. And now, if I could ask our elementary school and upper elementary school administrators to join us at the podium for their combined budget presentation.
I had to switch it up a little bit.
There we go.
So, I'm Bob Preston, principal of Arleth Elementary School, and I have the team with us here today. So, from Eisenhower, we have Dale Rubino. From Truman, Amy Stuber, Wilson, the good Timothy Byrne, and then from the SUES, Stacy Cogliani, and Rich Tola. So, when we develop our budget, we think of three things. We think of our academics, which includes our instructional supplies, technology and programs. We also think about professional development. How do we support our teachers and how do we support them in the areas of reading, writing, mathematics, and social-emotional development? And that all goes into what we try to do when we develop our budget. We keep these three things in mind. So, over the last year, we have some instructional achievements. Last year, we were able to implement our alternate literacy program for special education, which is our Sunde Systems. We also were able to implement the Hegarty Phrenemic Awareness Program for Grade Two. And we started implementing My Reading Academy and My Math Academy in Grade Three. We already had it in grades K to two, and now we have it in Grade Three. We continue to support our Fontis and Pennell program. So, there's many components to that program, including the shared reading, guided reading, mini lessons, interactive read-alouds, and the writing component. So, we have to keep supporting that. And also continue to focus on writing. So, this year, we have a district writing assessment in grades four and five. We also have a focus on writing, narrative writing in grades two, and our literary analysis in Grade Three. And that's all supported, those writing initiatives are supported by Dr. Ken. I'll talk about that in the next slide. We also implemented Hegarty Phrenemic Awareness Program for Grade Two. Again, we had that in K and one, and now we brought it up to K-two, Grade Two. And then, we also continue to support our current initiatives, the Envision Math Program, Math iXL, ST Math, and Extramath. And we were committed to sustained professional development. Again, we have Dr. Ken helping us out with writing in grades two and three. We also had Dr. Mylou for helping with math and teacher-to-teacher supporting our math teachers as well. So, looking forward, actually, no, missed my slide. For social-emotional learning, we have a lot of programs that help support the students in this area. So, we do our own character education programs. We have Silas, which is an awesome program that, you know, helps us with ideas to support social-emotional learning for the students. Effective School Solutions, which helps with our counseling in Tier Three for those students. Culture and Climate Committees, our Responsive Classroom and Playworks, which is really our two major platforms for SEL. And then also, we're continuing with our Race for Equity and Harmony and our Student Advisory Committees. So, as we develop next year's budget, we're keeping those same three components in mind, and we're going to try to continue doing what we're doing and just keep moving it forward. So, we're going to look to implement Hegarty Decodables in grades K to two. We're going to try to implement Reader Notebooks in Grade Three. And the AFILS, Central Reach Platform for our Self-Contained MD Program, and that's the Assessment of Functional Life Skills. It's really going to be a great program to help give our teachers in that program some real concrete things to assess students on and to show their growth. We're also going to continue to support the Alternate Literacy Program, the Sunde System for Special Education. Continue to support and implement our F&amp;P, Fontis and Pennell Components. Again, there's lots of components and we have to keep making sure that we have everything there for the teachers. And continue to support the My Reading Academy and the Hegarty Phrenics Awareness Programs. We're looking to get Success Maker, which is an adaptive computer program for Envision in grades four and five. And we're also looking to implement Momentum for our ASI teachers in grades K to three. And again, that's a diagnostic assessment that will help the ASI math teachers develop, see their weaknesses and drive instruction. Continue to implement our Envision Program along with those other programs that we have, iXL, Extramath, ST Math, and continue to support My Math Academy. So, overall, in summary, we have those three areas. We have, a lot of our budget is going to go into instructional supplies, supplies for math, language arts, science, and technology. We're also going to do our multiple tiers system of supports. That's the INRS that everybody's been talking about. So, we have our ASI for math and literacy. We run morning academies for both math and literacy. Tier Three Tutoring, which is great one-on-one instruction for those students. And our Rising Stars Academy, which really tries to focus on skills for the NJSLA. And also committing to our professional development, continue those partnerships with the Achieve Coaches, the Love of Literacy, Dr. Mylou, and Teacher-to-Teacher. Thank you. If you have any questions, we're all here for you.
Questions for Mr. Preston or any of our elementary school principals?
Yeah, I have a question. Are we teaching cursive?
We are.
Okay, I thought we were. I just wanted to check because people are always saying that schools are not teaching cursive. Okay.
Yeah, that's important. Thank you. I have a question. Do you, all of you notice that, is there a difference between these kids who came to kindergarten, haven't had any COVID break, you know, they, they've been going to school without any kind of break? Do you notice a difference in those, the way they're learning versus the kids that had, had actually had to take a break because of COVID? Not that they wanted to, but they were forced to.
I see difference.
So, it's improved, right? Yeah, so, you think though, like, I don't always agree with Phil Murphy, the governor. However, I do agree with him on this pre-K early education. So, it's the combination of the early education, back to school full-time, you're seeing a great improvement. So, like, when people are moaning and groaning about schools and every time they put out that stupid school list that we don't even participate in, you know, everybody's always got something to say. But, so, the combination of the pre-K program that's really good, strong, and people are moving into Sayville just to participate in it, and the no break, we're out, we're done with that COVID, everything is starting to look better.
Ms. Stuber, use the microphone. Just so the people who are honking here.
Sorry. Very good, then. I thought I was loud enough, Dr. Labby.
It's not for us, it's for the people at home watching.
Okay.
We've got like about a million people watching this, more than the Super Bowl.
Million, really?
Millions. So, just to be back.
For our presentation, I'm sure.
And we had some of our, our preschool instructional coaches went to visit the kindergarten teachers, and they went to all the elementary schools. And I think we're back on track because the feedback that we received from the teachers, just the kindergarten teachers, were the most beautiful emails to our preschool teachers, just thanking them for the hard work that they were doing with the preschools. So, I think we're back on track and it's been a great partnership. No, good.
That's, that's an example of what we call vertical articulation.
What grade would our first preschool class be in now?
Our first preschool class will be in, I think they're in, well, we've had preschool. So, you're talking about when we, when we started the full program?
The project before, yeah.
How long's been? Six, so they're being, they'll be in fifth grade?
Fourth or fifth grade.
Fourth or fifth grade?
Fourth grade, fifth grade. Yeah, fourth grade, if they started.
But as I was saying earlier, Mrs., Mrs. Burns is talking about a strategy that we use throughout the district called vertical articulation, where one group of teachers talks to another group of teachers. And as you can see, it was very productive. We also do that with our third-grade teachers and our fourth-grade teachers as a transition from the elementary schools to, to SAMSEL. And then, our fifth-grade teachers with our sixth-grade teachers as a transition from SAMSEL to the middle school.
Now, is that something that we could do anonymously? Because like, I don't necessarily know if I was talking to Mr. Aguirre about his growth or his class, like, that I would be right to his face truthful, like, you know what I mean? If I did have some, if there was some shortcomings, I might not be willing to say it to his face.
There have been plenty of occasions where there's been pretty blunt feedback. And that's important too. You need to have candid feedback. You, you can't sugarcoat everything. And Mrs. Burns will tell you that there have been years where the feedback hasn't been great between preschool and kindergarten. And I'm sure our principals will tell you the same thing about the transitions to the other grade levels. It's important that teachers have the ability to speak freely and candidly about the concerns that they have, or as well about the, the positive things that they want to express. That way, we learn how to better meet the needs of the kids as they transition from one level to the next.
Good.
Okay, but you got to keep it short. Yes, Mr. Byrne.
I just wanted to provide a further dimensional quality to your question, though, is that when we're looking at education, it's more than just what we do in the classroom. And so, we need to look at the mental health of our, of our families because that is very, varied. And so, that we need to be able to address how they're doing and what impact that has on the children when they come to school. And that will vary from year to year.
Yeah, I agree with that.
From circumstances to circumstances, just in terms of where society's going as well. So, we just don't want to think of it just in terms of just what we're teaching them, but the environment they're coming from and how we can better support that environment.
Right, yep, that's very true. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. On many levels. Any more questions for our elementary team? Great job, guys. Thank you very much. And, and last, but certainly not least, our amazing Director of Athletics, Ms. Badami is going to present to you the 2025, 2026 athletics budget, proposed budget. No, well, she does. Jen's, Jen's our lead.
It's like halfway through my night, guys. This is like we're just getting over a basketball game, you know, so. But thank you. Okay, great. Well, good evening and thank you again for having me. I can't believe this is going into our, what, Kim ninth? Oh, Kim's not here. Where'd she go? Our ninth year.
Yeah.
Here. I came in with Ms. Hill as well. So, my pro, if you've watched me before or been in this meeting before, my presentation doesn't change very much because how I structured, when I came here, my first year, the first few months before we had to, I had to go over a budget. I really observed how things were done here. I did data on what we needed. I talked to the coaches and I thought it was best that as you, as regularly as you do budgets, to kind of go in a four or five-year chunk. So, now we're in the second phase of that four-to-five-year chunk that I've been here. And what we really concentrated on is making sure every sport is heard, every sport has what they need, equal distribution. And I start with large equipment and bring that through so I could go on these past nine years of, of what we gotten, but, you know, what we've received, but it's such things as, you know, cheer mats, wrestling mats, high jump pits, so on and so forth for, is something for each sport as we filter through. We've raised our technology and resources. We have a great recruiting platform. We have a great online platform through Huddle. All the sports have that availability. All the athletes have that availability to look into that, watch that, get their own video clips from that. We have cameras in the gyms and I hope to build with cameras outside once we get a little bit, our Wi-Fi projects are, are reaching there. But we have iPads for all games for recording, even at the middle school. I put in here high school and middle school uniforms because when I first got here, it kind of showed a pattern like, okay, we got to ask for football uniforms. We got to ask for these uniforms. And now, it's kind of just, we rotate through. And it's this year's for this team's uniforms. And it's great, and it makes it very easy on the budget. It makes it go through very seamlessly, and it doesn't seem like a big tax or a big ask on the budget. It's kind of already pre-put in there. And that's what a lot of the, the budget is, unless we're adding new things, we've played, stayed pretty consistent through the budget. The proudest thing that we've done, and I've been so, it's just been amazing here that we've had the opportunity to expand our athletic program, to expand a lot of things. But, you know, I'm talking about athletics, so. We've expanded our athletic program. Again, when I first got here, it was funny, it was a little, I got here and Sayerville's a big school district, and Sayerville has very proud athletics. And a bunch of people, when they got the job, they're like, oh, you're the athletic director? That's a very hard job. That's very long hours. That's very hard, this. And it's very true. However, when I got here, I realized that we didn't have everything that other schools actually had. From where I came from up north, the school I had had every sport, every level. And it was a little different atmosphere because you could have skiing, because we were right next to, you know, Vernon, and we had crew because we sponsored one kid. But when we looked. But when we looked through it and we did the data, we had so much to grow, and we were able to grow the athletic program by 62% from when I first got here. That is a huge amount. Now, that 62% is in just teams, it's kids. The opportunity for athletes to play these sports. Now, we could have kept it as is, you know, having a freshman team doesn't mean we're going to have a stellar varsity team. That's not what it's about. What it's about is that athletes, that students can learn from the athletic process, from middle school into high school, and then they can choose if they want to stay with it, their junior, senior year, but they have the opportunity to be great athletes and have that realm carry them, or just experience athletics at a level where they can appreciate all the things that come with being an athlete, problem-solving, learning to deal with adversity, learning to deal with just humans. And so we've been successful, we now have a full volleyball program. Before that, we implemented a full lacrosse program. We were also able to expand our cheer program to two full teams, game day and all music. We have a second level at all of our middle school, so we have two teams at all of our middle school, and we are very fortunate to do that, not every school can do that. And we're very fortunate that we have the availability to do that in the divisions that we're in. So again, we've grown from 47 levels when I first got here, that's freshman, you know, varsity, freshman, junior varsity, varsity, or one middle school level, to nearly 80 levels of athletics, of teams here, which is amazing. And the same thing, we've been able to grow our coaching staff as well, which is just great for the staff in general, for getting a job in Sayerville and having those opportunities.
Okay.
So, goals. Goals are pretty much the same as what I've just been saying. Sustain. What do we need? What do we need to keep our programs going and alive? So each year, I try to focus on a different sport, and this year finally has come up for baseball and softball. I would like to get some semi-permanent bullpens. I'm still hoping that our softball and baseball facilities are going to grow, but we're, right now, what we can do, I would like to at least get the equipment needed to give them a good, a good area, a good safe area to have baseball, softball, bullpens. Rentals, I put this in here just because I want to make sure we realize that the amount that I put in is the maximum base amount that we can use. We may not use it every year, but like this year for swimming, we probably will, because we have a very high chance of making states, and then we will need that rental facility longer. Rental facilities also include porta-potties and golf facilities, bowling facilities, so it's really dependent, it's not always dependent on the success of the team, it's more dependent on what the team needs that year, and if maybe they aren't successful, we find different tournaments for them to go in that may keep our facilities or use different facilities a little longer, so it really grows those athletes. And again, things that I can't control are the rental fees or officials and how NJSA puts the fees out for officials. NJSA, over the past few years, has been a huge push for officials, because we have a huge shortage, not just in New Jersey, but across the nation of officials, and so they have increased official fees, which I just, we just kind of have to swallow in our budget. So those are the things that, in the budget, we'd like to sustain. And then, moving forward is the, is, I call it the final stages, because it's, we're almost there for, for, for every sport. There's a few things that we can still grow in the future, but, but now, these are the last stages of what we can grow for our volleyball teams, getting a full boys' and girls' freshman team, because we implemented lacrosse freshman teams last year, and so this will be the first year with that. And then our flag football, and this is for the high school, our flag football, we've been piloting as NJSA has been piloting as a non-strenuous, it's called the non-strenuous sport, so what that means is that you can play another sport while you play it. So a lot of our track athletes and softball and lacrosse athletes were double-timing with that, and I kind of weeded that out, so that this year, the past couple of years, it was, you know, freshmen can't join both, and then sophomores can't join both, so that this year, we have a full flag football only, they are just flag football athletes, because next year NJSA will sanction it as a full strenuous NJSA sport, where that they get a full schedule, they will practice six times a week like every other sport. There's amazing college opportunities in this for female athletes. Irvington got ahead of this on, on the programs that they have, and this past season, they had athletes sign to colleges to play flag football, which was awesome, and we have that real potential here. So those are the high school teams that we're looking to expand on this year, and the middle school teams, now that we have a full volleyball program and a full lacrosse program, there's a few other, I waited on this one, we had incredible recreation programs, and that gave them a lot of time to, a lot of area to play, where starting a middle school team a few years ago wasn't the right thing to do, because there wasn't, there was only, I think, three lacrosse schools to play against. So that wasn't something that was better, that we wanted to take away from them playing on their travel or recreation team, and the same thing for volleyball. Now, there's quite a few schools, and we're jumping into a good, a good matrix of, of a schedule where we can have six to nine home games, that's 12 to 18, to games in a season, which is comparable to our basketball, softball, baseball, soccer. So the implementation of one team per gender for boys' and girls' volleyball and boys' and girls' lacrosse is what we'd like to add next. In that, okay, so in that expansion, this is the outline, what we need for that, coaches, okay? If you're going to add a team, you're going to need coaches, so we're going to need another assistant coach for girls' volleyball and another assistant coach for boys' volleyball. We're going to need to upgrade what we pay the coaches for flag football, because we're playing them at a special advisor salary rather than a coaching salary, because they aren't practicing as many times a week and aren't having a full game schedule, where they're going to upgrade to six times a week, full game schedule. Once it becomes an official sport, which should be next year. The middle school coaches that we're going to need, we're going to need one coach per gender for volleyball, for a boys' team and a girls' team, and one head coach for girls' lacrosse, and one head coach for boys' lacrosse. The funds that we'll need for supplies, if you're going to have games, you're going to have added official fees, because you're going to have six to nine home games. Uniforms, we're only going to need a little bit initially, and then they're actually going to, the, the uniform rotation that we do, it's going to get swallowed right into it. So if we can get those initial, which at middle school, they usually do reversible, the reversible jerseys, they're, they're not that expensive to get put in, and then it just go, and then the following year, we don't need any more money, it's just the same amount for, and they get put into the rotation. High school, we will need no new purchases of uniforms, we already have those programs with enough uniforms, and they are already in our rotation. For supplies, we pushed down the supplies to the middle school as it is, so we have supplies for lacrosse, we have supplies for volleyball already, and it will just go into our current supply account, because the high school teams, that supply money actually does the whole high school and middle school, because we use a lot of the same equipment, and it either gets passed down or bought specifically for that level out of that supply. So there will be no added extra supply money, because of the way we did it. Volleyball at the high school, we'll need no extra equipment, we already have two gyms with two nets. At the middle school, nothing extra, we're just going to go over to Borough Hall, we, we use that for field hockey as well, so we have a field already set up there for games, so that's going to cost us no extra. The only thing that's going to cost us a little extra is a volleyball system, you have to have a specific system, you can't use the phys ed volleyball nets, so it will be a net system that we bought a couple of years ago for the high school. It's going to be a similar net system that we are now going to implement into the middle school. And that's it. Questions?
I have a question of the, you said, first of all, 62% increase is amazing, congratulations on getting more kids active in sports.
Thanks.
Is that percentage, do you see that it is a majority of students who are not previously participating in sports that are newly getting involved in a sport that, that's newly offered?
Twofold, yes. So when we did, when we implemented volleyball, we did, we did a survey, and then once those athletes came out, they weren't soccer players, they weren't field hockey players, they were brand-new sport people. So, and the same thing with lacrosse, there wasn't, we thought there was going to be a big pull from, you know, baseball or, or softball, or, but there wasn't, it was, it was just athletes who wanted, wanted to try a new sport and came in. For the middle school, however, this is what's awesome, is that we, when you have one team, we tried to keep about, let's say, let's, let's take a soccer team, we tried to keep about 24 kids, 22 kids for one team. 11 can only go on the field. And so even though we tried to, you know, keep them engaged, we couldn't play all of them, but we took that amount on with one coach, which is a huge feat. And so they were getting a good experience, but they weren't getting a great experience, and we still had to cut. Where now, we can, you know, it's not a crazy amount more, maybe 30 kids, 15 for each team, one coach for each, and they're all getting more playing time, because it's two full teams that they can go out and play. So where they didn't, you know, join a new sport, they may have gotten cut from the sport. And that's what I really wanted to avoid, is I wanted to avoid them getting cut from the sport and saying, it's okay, you're, you know, you're a seventh grader, you can come back next year. Well, we saw a trend that some people said that some athletes found that okay, particularly female athletes did not find that okay, and we were losing a lot of female athletes that way, once they were cut from that sport. So I'm not saying we're at a full 0% of cuts, because we do have, like, 90 kids that come out for a basketball team, and that's just impossible to handle, but we do, we've cut down the amount of cutting that we do and increased the amount that can actually stay on a team and play in games.
Yeah, yeah, that's awesome. I have another question for you, for your high school football players, do you guys, are you involved with the sprint football leagues across the country? Our son played for Bombers, Micah Chitkowski, I remember.
Caldwell.
You had just, yes, and you had just come on right before that year.
Yes.
He got almost a full ride to Caldwell.
Yes.
And when we got to Caldwell, his coach would discuss recruitment with his other coaches, and Sayerville High School is a school they look at every year.
Yes, we, we.
The talent here.
Yes, we, so we were made aware of that, we knew about that a few years ago, and we keep pushing, is the wrong word, but we have the availability for those athletes to understand that there are programs out there, and, and for certain athletes who are good football players, but maybe be a little slender build, that's a perfect program for them. And, yeah, we've sent quite a few, we just had Caldwell in the other week, I believe, that they, they want a couple athletes as well, and so it's just the transition of, of actually going there. And just about, this is not part of my presentation, I'm going to give a little side note, just about college in general, all of our coaches do an excellent job talking about different levels. It, it, 7% of athletes play in college, that's it, right? That's, that's not from Sayerville, that's, that's, that's a national statistic, and it is such, when we have signing day, I just tell the kids, it's such an amazing accomplishment to go on and play in college at any level, and everyone, you know, when you think of, oh, the D1s, there are so many different levels, and a Division III school has so much to offer, a Division II has so much to offer, especially student athletes, at that level, the experience and getting into college, and we really try to promote all levels and all different kinds of athletics from here.
Thank you, thank you.
Any more questions?
As always, I am in awe of your accomplishments and your enthusiasm. How are you still standing?
This is great. This is, this is.
God bless you, you are amazing.
This keeps me going. This is, I, I appreciate all of you, the, the amount that you have all supported the athletic program is, is amazing. The kids see it, the coaches see it, it's great to be in a position that, when they come, and I have a lot, I talk to the coaches, I talk to coaches, I talk to athletes a lot, you know, Morgan came here, she was like, you know, give me pounds, we, you know, we talk, and I talk to the athletes, and they feel the support, and they feel that it is equitable. And that was my real goal here, making sure that everyone feels that they have the support, that they're doing great things and they're accomplishing great things for, for Sayerville. Thank you, guys.
It's fantastic what you've done at the middle school to prepare kids and give them so many more opportunities. My daughter plays soccer, and she's in eighth grade now, and the coaches have been fantastic there, and prepare them for going on to high school in freshman sports or JV sports, and it's just, it's fantastic to watch the transition and how the coaches prepare for that, and yeah, it's just a great program you've built.
Yeah, I'm, the coaches are proud of it, I'm really proud of it, and the kids seem to really enjoy it.
And I was going to say, my daughter plays in lacrosse, and it's been amazing seeing, you know, with her coach, the, how they, not only the playing, not the friendship that they are, and how they talk with the coach about a lot of the things, the, you know, the support that they gave to, to all the athletes is amazing. And we, as a family, we love going to the games, we love seeing her, how she is getting better and better, and is, you know, thank you for the program that you guys have.
And that's what's really important, having so many different levels, we could cut down and just concentrate on winning, and, and, listen, our lacrosse program did great, they were division champions, but having all those coaches and having the opportunity of different levels really gives the athlete time to enjoy their role in athletics, because it's not just about the great athlete, and, and it's about the great athlete all the way down to that kid who wants to belong to something and really grow from something. So we are really blessed here to, to have what we have. I'm excited.
I, I want to make a comment, too. Even though we are known for football, you know, Sayerville football, football, I think that as a girl who grew up before Title IX was available, and playing in old boys' hand-me-down uniforms, because girls never got anything new, I do think we really, you do a really good job, your program with girls' sports, making girls feel empowered and giving them every opportunity to be just as competitive as football players. So I really think you deserve a lot of credit for that, and also the board, all of us and people before us, okay, who have voted for these programs, and, you know, I'm glad that we have that kind of district, where all of our kids, boys and girls, have the same opportunity to excel.
Yeah, and I think the athlete, I hope the athletes, from, you know, from the interactions that I have, really do feel that, and that's.
They do, they do.
That's excellent.
Okay.
Great.
Great job. Go to bed.
Have a great night.
And we're going to muscle through two more presentations, very short, Mr. Glock-Malloy has to present, it's a requirement, the 2024-2025 Cycle One School Safety Data. Mr. Glock-Malloy?
So this is about our midway point for our cycle data. Chris is bringing me the clicker, but. We will see this data again as we get towards the end of the school year, which is when it truly finalizes. This is our September 1 through December 31st data, and again, we'll have a January 1 through June 30 data. In that second round, although we do submit this to the state as a period-one reporting, building principals, district commissioners can make adjustments to the period-one data within the period-two timeframe as well. So this is essentially our, our midway draft period. The student data safety system keeps growing, but is comprised of a number of different components. The first and most traditional component is it does record. The first and most traditional component is it does record specific incidents of discipline throughout our school buildings. There are several classifications for violence, substance abuse, weapons offense, vandalism. Our HIBs, both confirmed and alleged. And then we have this catch-all category for other reasons that we might remove a student from the school environment. That would be our out-of-school and in-school suspensions. You can see on that next slide there, this is our breakdown by school for each of those categories for our period of September one through December thirty-first of this year. And then moving on to the slide after that, you can see our comparative breakdown totals across our seventeen, eighteen through twenty-four, twenty-five. All of our prior year presentations are still up on our website, so if you wanted to look at the comparisons for each individual school, you can. Included in this report is just our total comparison year-over-year for reporting Period One. We typically have more in reporting Period Two than we do in One, because as we move through the year, our consequences increase. You have a third, fourth, or fifth defense of something specific, particularly for that other incidence leading to removal, that tends to start accumulating as we get into the second half of the school year. The next piece of our student safety data system is our HIB trainings and programs. This is less about specific student-focused data. This includes both student and staff-focused data. Our trainings are basically the trainings that our individual schools roll out related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying. This can be a wide range of potential training programs, and each individual principal works with their school teams to select the ones that are best geared towards their building. And then we also have some that we move out at a district level. Programs are a little bit different than our trainings. Programs might be something such as our, our Red Rib, Red Ribbon Week, a climate and culture-type program, again, specific to each building as well as some district-level ones. But the programs are more focused to something that we are doing as opposed to a training. Sometimes there is overlap between the two. We may have a training that leads to a program. Coming down on our slides there, you can see our total sums for each building, trainings and programs, and our totals throughout the district for reporting Period One. And then as with our other slide deck, you can see our comparative for reporting Period One throughout the course of seventeen, eighteen through twenty-four, twenty-five. And we have some variations year-over-year, depending on what programs we're rolling out in the district, but we stayed pretty consistent overall. Unlike our student safety data, many of our trainings and programs tend to exist in the first part of the year. So with student safety data, you tend to see a growth in the second part. With trainings and programs, you tend to see most of our numbers front-loaded into the first reporting period. And last up, our newest inclusion. Christopher, or Jolene? But for those of us that have the presentation in front of us, that's our restraint and seclusion section. This was included two years ago, starting with our twenty-two, twenty-three school year. This is specific to our special education population, and basically it is a record of, when we would have restraints or seclusions under the law within our school programs. However, while seclusions are recognized by the Department of Education, we don't engage in seclusion practices in Sayerville School District. We do have specific restraints. Mr. Naster's programs and trainings are very well-versed in what our staff do as far as when and how we need to engage in a restraint program. And you can see, well, we can't see up on the board, but you can see on the online as well as the papers in front of us, the breakdown of restraints and seclusions over the course of this year for reporting Period One, as well as a comparison data for twenty-two, twenty-three, and forward through twenty-four, twenty-five. And although we don't have it up on the screen, that is the reporting Period One Student Safety Data System information for this year. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Glock-Malloy? Seeing none?
Sorry, I do have a question.
Sure.
When it comes to the restraints, you're saying, so this is in scenarios where the child misbehaved, and this is kind of in order to kind of get, to get them calmed down? Or how exactly are the restraints applied?
Mr. Naster?
An actual restraint under federal and state law is a last resort for students who are about to harm themselves or somebody else. So it's not necessarily a calm-down technique. We do have as part of our Crisis Prevention Institute training de-escalation techniques to avoid the need for restraint. But an actual restraint that's reportable is when you do have to put your hands on to, to protect somebody. And it could be somebody who's running out of the building into the street.
I have a quick question. With the trainings and programs for Wilson, it says zero trainings when all of the other schools have a number of trainings offered as well as programs. Is there any background explanation for that one?
Mr. Byrne, well, he does have through the end of the year to, to accommodate for both trainings and programs. He's been running several program-based systems in his school this year. And while he's launching them as student and staff-based programs, I would argue that they have training components in them, but he only classified them as one or the other, which by the guidelines of SSDS is what he should do. But those programs all have training components with them. So I think this is more how the data is entered based on the DOE guidance as opposed to he didn't have any trainings in HIBs throughout the course of this year.
Any more questions? Okay, let's transition to Ms. Hill, who's gonna provide you with a brief synopsis of the annual comprehensive fiscal report and our auditor's manager, management report.
Good evening. So we are required to provide an audit synopsis every year to the board before you vote on the audit, or to accept the audit. And it, we're required to report on Exhibit B1, which is our balance sheet, as well as Exhibit B2, which is our statement of revenues and expenditures and any audit findings. So I have this schedule broken up onto these slides to try to make it a little bit easier to read, but there is a lot of numbers, and they are very small. I'm not gonna read you all of the numbers, I'm just gonna review the sheet briefly. We have several different funds here, that total, our total government funds. And on our balance sheet, we have our general fund, which is all of our operating expenses, which includes any revenues we get from the state as well as local tax levy. We also have the special revenue fund. This is where any of our grants would be factored in, as well as some other district things like student activities. And then we have our capital projects fund. This would encompass anything from our ESIP as well as the bond referendum. And then we have our debt service fund. Our debt service fund is where we pay out our bond payments, and then that totals our total government funds. The accounting kind of formula for school districts is your assets are equal to your liabilities plus any fund balance. So the first section of this is our total assets. So there's a breakdown by fund, and then our total government funds assets are about a hundred and twelve million dollars. Then in the lower part of this slide, you'll see our liabilities. So this shows you any outstanding liabilities that we had on June thirtieth of 2024. So this is any accounts payables that we had or anything like that. The next sheet is the bottom section of the same exhibit, B1, and this is for our fund balance. So this is kind of like our, what our savings accounts are, and this is how it's all kind of broken up. It's also gonna cover any kind of reserve funds, like capital reserve, maintenance reserve, or emergency reserve. And you'll see down here, our total fund balances are a hundred million. And if we go back just one second, our liabilities were eleven point nine million, and that totals a hundred and twelve million, which equals our assets. So our assets equal our liabilities and our fund balance. The next sheet is Exhibit B1, but Sheet Two. This just goes into a little bit of a further breakdown. It takes what our total fund balance was and adds or subtracts any other kind of liabilities, any long-term liabilities that we may have. So you'll see on here, we have our starting fund balance, then we have our cost of assets less any accumulated depreciation, and any internal service fund, which is where we have our self-insured benefits. If we continue down, that's just the second half of that page. This is any of our long-term liabilities, which includes our net pension liability and compensated absences. Compensated absences would be if the district were to close tomorrow and we had to pay out anybody's pension or retirement benefits or anything like that, that's where that comes in. So then this has at the bottom, our net position of total government activities is about fifty-one point six million dollars. Next up, we have Exhibit B2, which is our governmental fund's statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. So this schedule has those same funds broken out as well as the total column. This lists for you the revenues that we had for the school year of 2023 to 2024. And you'll see our total revenues for all government funds was a hundred and sixty-nine point nine million. And then at the bottom, you'll see we start our expenditures. So this is our instructional expenditures are listed here. And then if we go to the next slide, this has the rest of our expenditures listed as well as our fund balances. So you'll see all the way at the bottom, our fund balance on June thirtieth, 2024, was that hundred million dollars referenced on Exhibit B1. So all these schedules kind of tie together. And then finally, any audit recommendations we had? And I'm pleased to report, we had no audit recommendations from this past school year. And that is the audit synopsis.
Questions for Ms. Hill?
So they didn't even, they didn't even flag us for the food service.
Thank you for being very good with our money. That's what I wanna say.
Well, I, I do have to say, I have a very wonderful staff who helps me keep everything running, and a lot of the fact that we don't have recommendations or anything like that is because they're very diligent in their jobs.
Yeah, but you're overseeing it, so you're doing a good job.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Take some credit.
Now a brief synopsis of retirements from Dr. Labby.
Plus, you gotta deal with Dr. Labby.
And that concludes our presentations. Mrs. Bloom?
It says board discussion, but I think we've discussed enough for tonight. So we will take a motion to open to public for agenda items only.
So moved.
We don't need a motion.
Did I say it right?
Okay. Okay, we don't need a motion.
Closed.
Anyone for agenda items only? Okay, seeing none, we will close public. Dr. Labby, take it away.
I'll be, I'll be as brief.
Please be quick.
And as brisk as I can be.
Promises, promises.
All right, so let's, let's start off with finance, just to bring you through this. Obviously, number fourteen, which you can find on page three, we're asking you to approve the audit report that Ms. Hill just provided you a briefing of. Number fifteen, which you can find on page three, we're asking you to accept a very generous donation from the Addicks family.
Is that Brooks' family?
Yeah, the Addicks family, yep. For the Sayerville Warmer Wall High School Theater Program. Number sixteen through eighteen, on pages three and four, kudos to Ms. Bird and everyone that assisted in the win, or the, at least the submission and what we feel is going to be very successful submissions of the Connect Safely Grant and the amount of a thousand dollars, as well as the Climate Change and Education Resilience Interdisciplinary Learning Grant, which is in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Number nineteen, which is on page four, we're asking you once again, approve a business endeavor for revenue that we have with the New Jersey Arts High School Program. We actually provide transportation. We've been providing transportation for the program last year. It's revenue for us, and they've asked us to do it again, so we're gonna continue to provide transportation. That's for all the students that attend throughout Middlesex County, so we're very pleased about that. It gives our students, obviously, a great opportunity to go to the program, but we earn some revenue by transporting all the students, so.
Put those buses to use.
Yes. Numbers twenty-one and twenty-two, Mr. Smith was just making mention about our food services program, spending that surplus down, so we're asking you to do that in twenty-one and twenty-two, which you can find on page four. Numbers thirty-five and thirty-six, something that we've talked about in finance and infrastructure, we're asking you to approve a professional agreement with our architect so that they can begin the process of designing plans to expand the parking in the driveway at the Eisenhower School, something that we've been looking to do for many years. If you are, you know, a parent of a student at the Eisenhower School, or you're a staff member there, you know that it's really not very safe. Mr. Rubino does a great job with his staff of making it as safe as possible, but it's been in the need for redesigning for many years, and we're very proud to say that we're actually gonna do that now. So we're asking you for the first step, which is just approving the professional services that they can go ahead and design the concept that they provided to us. And that's on the addendum. Any questions about anything on finance and infrastructure, those items or anything else?
Yeah, I did have a question on number twenty. It's, it says it's a change order for repair to the heating pipe and the sprinkler. Was that something that was damaged in construction, or was that something that they discovered after they went in?
My understanding, Jimmy can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that it came up while they were doing the work. They found that those repairs needed to take place.
Okay, so they found damage. They didn't cause damage.
Hit the button, Jim, hit the button.
It came up during the inspection, when they were looking over the amount of flow that we're gonna now need to do the entire building, that heads and other pieces of equipment were not up to, to standards that we're gonna need moving forward with the extension of the building suppression system. Nothing was damaged, it was unforeseen, basically. Okay?
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, move to student achievement, page eleven, number one. Unfortunately, we're asking you to approve some long-term student suspensions. Number four, which you can find on page eleven, we're asking you to approve participation of thirteen high school students and thirty-four Sayerville Middle School students in the Arts High School, the program that I just related to you about we're providing transportation for. Now we're asking you to approve thirteen students from the high school and thirty students from the middle school to partici, thirty-four from the middle school to participate in that program for the costs given. Any questions on those or any other student achievement items? No, okay, moving along. Governance. Number one on page seventeen, we're asking you to approve for a second and final reading, and of course, adoption, our BOE Regulation 5517, that's student identification cards and LANER procedures. And then finally, oh, that's it. Any questions on governance? Okay, so personnel, we do have some retirements that I have to go ahead and mention, some bittersweet moments, we call them, here. As you can see, there are six members of our staff that will be retiring. So if you don't mind, I know it's late, but please indulge me as I give these incredible staff members the, the gratitude and commendations that they deserve for the many years that they've put into our school district and of course, for our students. So let's begin with Pamela Chartok, who is a teacher at the Sayerville Middle School. Today, we have the special privilege of honoring and recognizing someone who has made an indelible impact on our school community, and that's Mrs. Chartok, who will be retiring in June after a truly remarkable twenty-seven-year career as a social studies teacher at the middle school. For years, now decades, Ms. Chartok has been a cornerstone of the social studies department and an indelible fixture of our middle school. Her sharing not just a love of history and civics, but her deep commitment to helping students grow into thoughtful, informed, engaged individuals has left thousands of our students better off and ready to make their place in the world. Whether it was teaching students about the Constitution, leading our multicultural classes, or encouraging lively discussions about current events, Ms. Chartok always found ways to connect the classroom to the real world in meaningful and relevant ways. However, what truly sets Ms. Chartok apart wasn't just her lessons or what she did between the bells, though it was very, it, it was the way she educated her students and how she made them feel as individuals and young adults that was truly her defining characteristic. Students always knew that Mrs. Chartok cared about them, that she believed in their potential and that she wanted them to succeed, not just academically, but as young people. Being able to teach content is one thing, but being able to impact and help grow individuals into upstanding young men and women is another. Ms. Chartok set the standard for this. During her time here in Sayerville, Ms. Chartok brought accolades and recognition to our district. In fact, back in 2011, she became a teaching, a teaching American history James Monroe Liberty Fellow, after completing a multi-year professional development grant with colleagues and other social studies teachers from around the state. But her contributions went far beyond individual honors. They extended to initiatives that shaped our schools' cult, the, the school's culture initiatives that shaped our school's culture and spirit. Since 2001, she has been a member of the Class Act Committee, which is a volunteer teacher group that meets monthly to discuss positive school climate initiatives for students, staff, parents, and the community. Her dedication to this committee has been unwavering, reflecting her passion for making Sayerville Middle School a welcoming and supporting environment for everyone. In addition to her classroom teaching and committee work, Mrs. Chartok has chaired the middle school fall and spring food drives, ensuring that those in need within our school community are supported. Every December, she helps coordinate the CASA gift tree, collecting over 200 gifts from district-wide staff to give to foster children in Middlesex County. Beyond these efforts, Miss Chartok has been deeply involved in planning and coordinating school spirit activities, such as the middle school spirit weeks, and staff morale boosters like "You've Been Booed," as well as "My Mystery May Mate." Her enthusiasm for creating joy and connection within our school community has been unmatched. Mrs. Chartok's commitment to our students extended outside the classroom as well. She chaperoned countless student activities, including the eighth grade dinner dance, the sixth and seventh and eighth grade dances, middle school student activity nights. She also chaired the school-wide Student Impact Letter Project, an initiative where students wrote letters to staff members who have made a significant impact on them throughout the years. This project has become a cherished tradition, underscoring the meaningful relationships that Miss Chartok helped foster between students and staff at the middle school. Colleagues will tell you that Miss Chartok was the kind of teacher who made work feel like, feel less like a job and more like a shared mission. From mentoring new staff to volunteering for after-school events, she always brought love, energy, kindness, and dedication to everything she got involved in. Many at the Sayerville Middle School are better off as educators, as well as people, because they were able to cross paths and learn with Mrs. Chartok. Now, as Miss Chartok begins this next chapter, we know that she is leaving behind a legacy that will continue to shape the school community, as well as the greater Sayerville community for many years to come. Miss Chartok, your passion for teaching, your care for your students, and your love for this community will be deeply missed, but we are excited for you as you begin this next chapter of your life. On behalf of the entire district, we thank you, Miss Chartok, for your incredible service and wish you all the best in your retirement. May it be filled with everything you've been looking forward to: time with your family and friends, new adventures, and maybe even a little relaxation. Congratulations, Mrs. Chartok. Laura Cozy at the Truman Elementary School. It is with great pride and gratitude that we announce the upcoming retirement of Laura Cozy. Laura has been a cornerstone of the Truman Elementary School community for the past 34 years. For over three decades, she has provided countless opportunities for her kindergarten and first-grade students to learn and grow. Laura has dedicated her career to inspiring, educating, and shaping the minds and hearts of our youngest learners. Laura's passion for teaching and an unwavering commitment to student success has left an indelible mark on the Truman School community with the students, parents, and staff alike. She has impacted the lives of many, and we commend her hard work, creativity, and dedication in the field of education. Through her love of teaching, Laura has fostered a love of learning in her students and an appreciation from their parents, as they knew their children were in the loving and talented hands of our Mrs. Cozy. Throughout her career, Laura has been an inspiration to her colleagues. She has led by example and has served as a mentor to many. She has always been willing to lend a hand, share ideas, and model the utmost professionalism. It was truly a delight to have her, to see her in action. We thank Mrs. Cozy for making a difference in the lives of so many children in the Truman School, as well as the greater Sayerville community over the many, many years. While we are saddened to see Mrs. Cozy leave, we are excited for the next chapter that awaits her. Please join us in thanking Mrs. Cozy for her exceptional services to the Sayerville School District. We wish her a happy, fulfilling, and well-deserved retirement. Thank you, Mrs. Cozy, for your years of education, along with the cozy corner you created for your students. You have also created a cozy corner in all of our hearts. You will be greatly missed by all those who have been fortunate enough to call you teacher, colleague, and friend. So congratulations to Mrs. Cozy. Staying at the Truman School, we'd also like to congratulate Dorine Artizio, who is a paraprofessional there and has been there for 25 years. After 25 years of dedication, Dorine Artizio is retiring. Dorine has always played an important role at the Truman School. She began her career as a lunch aid and then went on to become a one-to-one paraprofessional at the school for a student with whom she stayed with until that student actually graduated from high school. She then returned to the Truman School to work as a classroom paraprofessional. Dorine has always adapted to any classroom that she worked in, from kindergarten to the high school. The teachers with whom she has worked with over the years have all praised her for being a hard-working, dedicated, and compassionate consummate professional. Dorine is always there to help teachers and, obviously, her students. She has a knack for anticipating their needs. She is the type of person that would do anything for anyone. She is a team player that is always willing to help. Her cheerful disposition was one of her greatest assets. Her students have always looked up to her as a role model, as she has made such positive, impactful relationships with so many of them. But now it is time for her to enjoy time with family and friends. She will be truly missed. Thank you, Dorine, for all that you have done for the Truman School and the Sayerville community. Congratulations on a job well done. And on a personal level, I've had an opportunity to know Mrs. Artizio for many years, and she is the sweetest, kindest person you'll ever meet. She loves her students and is adored and revered by all of the staff members that I've had the privilege of working with her, including myself. Laura Siradie, another paraprofessional from our district who is retiring after many, many years of service. Laura Siradie has dedicated the past 24 years to the Sayerville Middle School community. During this time, she has provided the highest-quality service as an individual student and program paraprofessional, and as a colleague and friend to many. As a program paraprofessional, Mrs. Siradie is, to put it bluntly, in demand, with countless teachers always requesting to work with her before the start of every single school year that she has worked in Sayerville. Her knowledge of student needs, knowledge of the district and school procedures, and most impressively, her academic knowledge in the areas of mathematics, language arts, science, and social studies, has made Mrs. Siradie a tremendous resource for our special education teachers and child study team members, and the go-to for many, as previously mentioned. As a one-to-one professional, no one, and we mean no one, can dispute her well-established reputation as a loving caretaker for those who needed her assistance. In fact, Mrs. Siradie has often been matched with students who need the highest level of care and support, and there is no doubt that she has been the emotional catalyst for many students as they adjust to the middle school and prepare to move on to the high school. To illustrate this point, Mrs. Siradie has most recently nurtured a student with significant needs from grade six to grade eight, and the result of Mrs. Siradie's effort includes an astonishing student improvement in the areas of communication, socialization, academics, and life skills. As a colleague, Mrs. Siradie goes well beyond the consummate professional. She is collegial, supportive, helpful, and truly caring. So much so, in fact, that Mr. Naster and Dr. Dafina have specifically selected and relied upon her as a stabilizing presence for both new teachers and new students alike. It goes without saying that Mrs. Siradie has offered the highest level of care through her patience, compassion, commitment, and academic prowess. These outstanding qualities have surely left a lasting impression on the students she has served so impeccably and the colleagues she has worked so well with. When you think of someone that is going to be hard to replace, think of Mrs. Siradie. When you think of someone that is selfless, think of Mrs. Siradie. When you think of someone that deserves our heartfelt gratitude, think of Mrs. Siradie. We wish her a long and happy, well-deserved retirement. Congratulations, Mrs. Siradie. And then, moving on to our Buildings and Grounds Department, Sal Halalji. Sal started his career with the Sayerville Board of Education in November of 2010. During his time as a high school invariably assigned custodian and district truck driver, Sal was known to be reliable and friendly to those who had the pleasure of working with him. His hard work and dedication have been truly appreciated, and he will be missed significantly by many, including me. We hope that this next chapter of retirements, this next chapter of his retirement brings him plenty of relaxation, adventure, and time to enjoy the things he loves with his family. Congratulations, Sal. And on a personal note, I too have had the privilege of working with Sal for many years, and he is just an amazingly kind and caring man, dedicated his time to our school district, went above and beyond many times. In fact, he was one of our volunteers during the pandemic that helped us go ahead and ship supplies out to members of the community in need. And that's something that I'll always be grateful to him for. So congratulations to Sal. And finally, Dale Roberts, a custodian at the middle school, but also who was a custodian at the Solover School while it was the central administration. Dale started his career with the Sayerville Board of Education back in July of 1996. During his time as a custodian at the Eisenhower School, his kindness and humor are remembered by many. Our Buildings and Grounds Secretary vividly remembers students waiting for the one of the, for one of the Mr. Dale's famous jokes at lunchtime more than 25 years ago. He then moved to the Solover School, where he worked closely with our administrative staff, lending a helping hand whenever he was needed. He has spent his last three years with the district at the middle school, where he will be missed tremendously as well by all who had the pleasure of working with him throughout the years. We wish Dale endless health, happiness, and wonderful memories with his wife Kathy during his well-deserved retirement. Congratulations, Dale. And on a personal level, too, I also had the privilege of working with Dale at Solover, you know, when he was working with the central administration. And again, you can't ask for a more dedicated professional, but such a kind and loving man. And here's the greatest example of the kind of person Dale was. Whenever there was a snowstorm, Dale would go outside and remove the snow from all the secretary's cars. So after he got done shoveling the sidewalks, salting the parking lots, and so forth, he took the time in the snow, covered in snow, to go ahead and remove the snow from our staff members' vehicles, which just, again, speaks volumes about the kind of person, the kind of professional Dale was. So congratulations to all of our retirees, and I do apologize for taking that amount of time, but it is well-deserved. I'll get to ribbing later. Numbers nine and 10, which you can find on pages 17 and 18, of course, we're asking you to hire new, certified, non-certified staff for this school year. Number 11, we're asking you to transfer some non-certified staff for this school year. Number 14, we're asking you to approve some advisors with their stipends. And number 18 to 21, this was brought up by Mr. Glahusky, as well as our elementary school principals. They talked about the Rising Stars Academies, which is our tutoring program at the elementary school for our third, fourth, and fifth graders to help them with the NGSLA, as well as our New Jersey graduation proficiency assessment at the high school, that boot camp, and the student learning assessment boot camp also at the high school. We're asking you to appoint faculty members to work in those three grade tutoring programs. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Any questions for Dr. Labby from the board? No? Okay, we'll take a motion to approve the superintendent's report, please.
Second.
I have Mrs. Paboon and Mr. Smith. Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Chudkowski?
Is this the vote that is for each item in the approval list?
Yeah, it's everything on the agenda.
Thank you. So I abstain from items one through four, as I wasn't present for those meetings, and I approve all remaining items.
One through four on finance?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Same as Carrie. I abstained from one to four. I wasn't present. The remain is yes.
Mrs. Maldonado?
Likewise, for me, yes to all, except for one through four on the finance. I'll abstain.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Paboon?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes. Okay. At this time, we will open again for public participation on any item that you wish to discuss. Please remember that you have a three-minute time limit, and we ask any Sayerville residents to approach the microphone first. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Wankmuller. I am a Sayerville sophomore at the Sayerville War Memorial High School. I come here today to present a revival of an event that used to happen at the high school. It is for the theater department. It was a one-act show that these students would put on. They would develop a show that they would write out a script for. They would cast their fellow students, staff members, and they would put on a show for about 45 minutes. And people would go there. It was for free, and if there was any costumes or props or any of the sort, it would come out of the student's budget, or it could be from the school, from the props that were already had there. Any staging items that were had there, we would use that for the show. And so I had talked to Mr. Glahusky about it, and he approves of the idea. I would just have to, obviously, get it approved here. But I just wanted to discuss the possible revival of this event. My theater teacher, Mr. Palma, had told me about this, and I was very interested, because I had dressed up as a Power Ranger for Halloween. And so he had said that he had wrote a 45-minute show about Power Rangers. And yeah, I would like to possibly get this revived before I get out of high school, because I am in the theater department. We actually are in a production for a show right now of the Addams Family. And yeah, I had talked to the director about it. He said he would be willing to supervise if needed. Yeah, that's pretty much what I wanted to talk about, the possible revival of this event.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from public?
Just turn the mic on. There's a button. No, there's a button on the bottom of the microphone.
It's red.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
Testing. Okay, I'm here. Okay. Good evening. I know it's a long night. I'll try and be quick, not too fast, so you can understand me. I have a tendency to speak quick. So dear Sayerville Board of Education members...
Amy, you need to say your name and address for the record.
Oh, so sorry. Hi, Kim Lindley. I'm a former special education teacher. I'm from Annapolis, New Jersey. So, dear Sayerville Board of Education members, thank you once again for your commitment, dedication, and sacrificing your time for all students that attend Sayerville School District. Tonight, I would like to revisit Policy 5756, and that would rescind this policy in light of the new administration, recent judicial rulings, and the needs of the special education student. Policy 5756 does not address the needs of all students. The students that require special education services are being overlooked. The special needs students generally require more time and varied teaching modalities in their everyday learning. The IEP is used to develop specific individual lessons that correspond with the curriculum. In the development of the IEP, plan for the student, the parent, teacher, special education teacher, social worker, psychologist, or sometimes a speech teacher, and the occupational therapists are involved in creating an individual educational plan for the student. Policy 5756 states that the teacher does not need to inform the parent or parents. Also, a separate file is kept, and the social worker is able to stand in for the parent if they do not agree with the child's preference, who they identify as out of school. When does a school policy enable the school, the child, to make a complex decisions without parental knowledge? There are many instances when school requires a parent's signature, example of a strip and taking aspirin when needed. Why does Policy 5756 allow the child to determine a major life decision without a mom or dad's knowledge? Finally, how can an IEP, which is legally binding and requires parental authorization, work in conjunction with Policy 5756? And I just want to say this evening, I heard a lot of enthusiasm from your administration. I know you're all for the school. But my concern is that with this administration's coming in... Oh, excuse me, one second. I want to sidetrack back to the attendance policy, the collaboration that you showed, a significant interest and increase as far as the students returning back to school. And that's because the trust is there with the parent. If you have trust with the parent and clarity for the widow's... It is shown even by your data process that we did before. So I just want to thank you for your time and your efforts for everything you do, and it's a long night. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I push?
Yeah.
Don?
It's on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your long service, and congratulations to an awesome victory.
Sorry, you need to say your name and address for the record, please.
Ron Mac Olbridge. And congratulations for an awesome victory, Kerry Chudkowski, and Katya Hernandez, and Lady Maldonado. Yeah, phenomenal. As everyone knows, we had an inauguration yesterday. We have a new president. I came here May, and I asked you to look at policy 5756 and put it to a vote before this election, and was informed that you're not going to change 5756. It's detrimental to children. I'm going to read some words here. They're not my words. Donald Trump, President Donald Trump signed 200 executive orders last night, and it's changing things. Your policies, I'm going to encourage general counsel, school lawyer, to review what was just signed in lieu of what you put yourselves under with 5756. In my opinion, you should have eliminated it because you're not going to be in compliance. These are not my words. This is not my opinion. This was written, this was presented by Donald Trump about 60 days ago, and I'm going to read it. "The left-wing gender insanity being pushed on our children is an act of child abuse. Very simple. Here is my plan to stop the chemical, physical, and emotional mutilation of our youth. On day one, I will revoke Joe Biden's cruel policies of so-called gender-firming care." That was yesterday. "Ridiculous, a process that includes giving kids puberty blockers, mutilating their physical appearance, and ultimately performing surgery on minor children. Can you believe this? I will sign a new executive order instructing every federal agency to cease all programs that promote the concept of sex and gender transition at any age. Then I will ask Congress to permanently stop federal taxpayer dollars from being used to promote or pay for these procedures and pass a law prohibiting child sexual mutilation in all 50 states. It will go quickly. Furthermore, I will support the creation of a private right of action for victims to sue doctors who have unforgivably performed these procedures on minor children. My Department of Education will inform states and school districts that if any teacher or school official suggests to a child that they could be trapped in the wrong body, they will be faced with severe consequences, including potential civil rights violations for sex discrimination and the elimination of federal funding. I will ask Congress to pass a bill establishing that the only genders recognized by the United States are male and female. Thank you, Donald J. Trump."
Well, I'm going to be on the same subject. My name is Jennifer Woodruff, and I'm a resident of Morganville, prior resident of Sayerville. And I'm here to speak for the children and for some, on behalf of some parents in Sayerville that I know. Most of you know that I'm against the 5756 policy, but there's a few new board members that I think need to also hear public opinions on the subject. The 5756 policy allows teachers to withhold information and mislead parents regarding important matters regarding their children. Keeping parents in the dark about a student's mental health and behavior is detrimental to the child's well-being. When a school doesn't have open communication, the parents are hindered in providing the necessary guidance and support the child needs. I understand the intent of the policy is to protect a student's privacy, but this policy erodes the partnership between schools and families. It also serves to create a bear wedge between a parent and a child during adolescence, a time when parents and children are already dealing with the typical growing-up struggles and ground rules. The policy is telling kids, "It's okay to keep secrets from your parents, but don't worry, you can trust us. Schools and teachers only have our children certain hours a day. Parents have the legal and moral responsibility of the child until they are no longer minors, and even upon adulthood, that love and care for that child never ceases." The 5756 policy is divisive and discriminatory. All children should be respected, but certain children should not have special rights at the expense of others. This policy puts teachers in a bad place, a position of deception, and it takes away the privacy rights of other children. I remember how modest I was in high school and having to dress in a locker room with other girls. I can't imagine what it would feel like for a boy to be in the room. I realize this commingling of boys and girls in bathrooms and lockers and sports is currently okay because of the change in the Title IX policy, but this is about to change with the new administration. School districts that have not rescinded the 5756 policy need to seriously rethink their decision to continue this policy. With the laws changing, the school districts are at a big risk for legal action by parents against the schools regarding privacy and safety concerns of their children. But lastly and most importantly, we know that the majority of these children that suddenly identify as a different gender from their sex do not have true gender dysphoria. We know that most of the kids have experienced trauma or have other mental health issues that need to be addressed and treated properly. Let's not encourage these kids to continue down a path of self-destruction, puberty blockers, and cross-sex hormones. Let's tell them they're...
I'm sorry, your time is up.
I know.
Thank you. Anyone else from public?
Let's abolish this and for the sake of the children and their futures. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close public. A motion to... Oh, anybody have a comment? Anybody on the board want to say anything at this time? No? No? Okay. In which case, we will adjourn. Meeting adjourned.
Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move.